Welcome to the August 7th zoning meeting of adjustment of the city of Jersey City. Eric, may we have the sunshine announcement?
Yes, in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act, notice has been provided to the Bergen Record, Ellis Polito, as well as posted with the city clerk. I'd like to request to mark this as B1 for the record. Sorry, this one.
May everyone please join me with the salute to the flag.
For diligence to the flag of United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Eric, may we have Rocco?
Yes. Commissioners, a bookie?
Here.
Commissioner Burns?
Here.
Commissioner D'Angelo?
Here.
Commissioner Shadid?
Here.
Commissioner Barron?
Here.
Acting Vice Chair Allen?
Here.
Oh, your vice chair.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Commissioner Allen.
I forgot I'm the vice chair.
Acting Chair Rule?
Here.
Okay, we have seven commissioners, we have quorum.
May we swear in the staff?
Staff, did you swear that the testimony and comments you will provide this evening will be the truth, the whole truth, and everybody, the truth?
Yes, and just note that Tanya just stepped out, so we'll have to do that later.
Okay. Okay, please be advised that advise no news cases will be started after 10:00 PM. We will try to finish the case being heard, however, if an applicant cannot be heard due to the lateness of the hour, then the case will be carried over to the next regular scheduled meeting with preservation of notice. Okay? Eric, do we have any notices or correspondence or adjournments?
Yeah, I'd just like to reiterate what we already have listed under adjournments. So item A, case Z 2024-0038, 311 Ocean Avenue, is being carried to September 11th. Item B, case Z 2025-0056, 85 Sherman Place, this item's being carried to September 11th with preservation of notice.
Thank you. And with that said, we're going to start with new business. The first case is case Z 2025-0029, and that is 114 Brunswick Street. Mr. Wine?
Good evening, Madam Acting Chair, Commissioners, for the record Benjamin Wine of Prime Tuval and Nacelle on behalf of the applicant.
How we doing? Much better.
Much better.
Now I can hear myself. Okay. I'm here before you this evening, first for an application for a D1 use variance in order to occupy the vacant retail space at 114 Brunswick Street, which for the record is block 11005, lot 36, as a category two restaurant. So this is a fairly straightforward application in that we're not proposing any changes to the actual site itself. This is an existing building, which you'll hear about from our professionals, and it's a vacant storefront, which has a unique little feature of a little mezzanine level that's been there. I always am terrified to use the word historic, but the building that's there is rather old and rather intact in place. So rather than proposing a new development, my client is seeking to fit out the existing space with a restaurant. I want to be clear that the use variance application is for one somewhat technical item, but it's obviously what puts us before the board this evening. So this zone, the RC3, permits category two restaurant hyphen cafes, but does not permit category two restaurants. The fundamental difference, if you read your definition section, is that the latter includes a kitchen, whereas a cafe does not include a kitchen. So the D1 use variance that we're here for this evening is because we have a kitchen associated with our proposed restaurant, which will be called ODA Bar Two, O-D-A Bar Two. You'll hear from our operations expert, who's actually the owner of the company, and she's got quite the history and quite the background, but the specific type of restaurant, it'll be a Georgian wine bar and restaurant. And again, I heard it, cheer. And we had a wonderful opportunity to meet with the VNA Association, with Mr. Hoffman His Association on a couple of occasions. I don't want to put words in their mouth, but they were thrilled about this and very excited to see it come to a storefront on Brunswick Street. So with that, I do intend to call three witnesses this evening, and they'll be brief, but it is important. The first one will be our project architect, Daniel Weaver, who's going to walk through how the fit out will practically work. Then we're going to have here from the owner and operator Anastasia, who will be able to speak to exactly the hours of operation and what type of service this will be. And finally, we'll finish with Charles, with our planner, who will walk you through the planning justifications for that use variance. So Madam Acting Chair, unless you have any questions, and me, I'm happy to proceed with my first witness.
Go right ahead.
So that'll be Dan. I'll step aside. Light plug in.
Can you swear that the testimony and...
I do. Daniel D. Weaver, W-E-A-V-I-S-N-VICTOR-E-R.
Thank you, so Dan, I'll just walk you through while I know what Eric's doing. While we do that, I'm just going to get you qualified. So if you can please give the board the benefit of your educational and professional background and the status of your license.
Sure. I'm an architect licensed in the state of New York and New Jersey. I received my degree in 1995 from the University of Cincinnati. It is, and my licenses are both in good standing. And I was previously the, not that it bears any, any...
Relevance?
Relevance, perhaps, but I was the, I was on the zoning board for the city of Hoboken for, I think, over eight years, and I was also on the planning board for Hoboken for five.
And for the record, Mr. Weaver used to give me a very hard time when I appeared before Hoboken, so feel free to return the favor.
Feel free.
With that, Madam Acting Chair, I would submit Mr. Weaver as an expert in the field of architecture.
Okay.
Thank you. So Dan, if you can pull up the plans, let's see.
We're trying.
Still working on it.
Check my settings. Oops.
There we go. Okay. So Dan, if you can walk the board briefly, but succinctly, but obviously with detail through the proposed floor plan and the fit out that we're proposing, as well as any change to the frontage elevation.
Sure, I will try to go as fast as I can, so if you have any questions, let me know. If you want me to slow down. I have been asked to slow down before by the court reporter. If there's no questions on the front, on the first page, it really just says what our variances are that we're going after. Our lot is not, it does not comply, it's not conforming, but then again, it also, it's pre-existing condition. The, this is the existing plan, you can see, I'll go left to right, the cellar plan, we have, it's really just a cellar with the hatched area on the left-hand side is where we have some existing mechanicals down there, and you can see the stairs at the bottom, that's the sidewalk doors, which currently exist, that's the only entrance into the cellar. At the ground floor, you'll see the street trees, the curb, the existing sidewalk door, and you will then, as we try to get into the building, you'll see the existing security grate, which was added at some point, which covers the entire ground floor facade, it's not very welcoming. Inside the grate, there's this sort of, this vestibule almost area, which is still outside, but behind the gate. And then you get into the store. This was previously a pharmacy, and then I believe a record store, among other things. There, where you see the dashed X, that's an open-to-above area, so really, that's a two-story area. As you get to the back, that's a lower one-story area where we have the mezzanine above. You'll see behind that, there's a small stair which leads you up to that mezzanine. That stair is non-compliant for code, both in width and in rise and run for the stairs themselves. If we go to the right-hand plan, you'll see that there is actually a mezzanine which has two portions to it, there's the portion on the left, which is where the stair lands, and you'll have the portion on the right. As we go through, this is the existing condition today, I'm just gonna, this was not in your original package, I will provide these to the court, we can mark them in the evidence.
Yeah, so just for the record, let's just call this A1, which would be an existing photo of the existing facade, correct?
Yes, this is existing photo, this was taken on March 6, 2025. There's a little key on the left-hand side, which shows the direction that we're looking. We're going to move inside in a moment, but what you can see on the outside is the bay windows, which are, which then look into that two-story space, and then in black, the storefront behind the really unfriendly security grating. Going inside, if we look on the mezzanine down, this is like a plan view almost, you can, toward the entry, you can see, as a pharmacy, this was a really beautiful spot with the, and there's a lot of potential here for the, to be a community resource, a gem, really. These are the built-in mahogany display shelves, which was the, actually the one thing when they met with the landowner, the landlord, they said, "You can do whatever you want, but don't touch these." I put these in with my father. And honestly, as an architect, going into the next one, interior condition two, we don't really want to touch these. We think we just need to clean them up, we need to clean the wood floor, redo the wood floor, and the owners just really want to bring this back to its sort of former glory. It's very cozy, and we think it has, it could be a great amenity for the community. The plan now that we're proposing, the cellar, we're going to add some mechanical units downstairs, garbage storage, right, we can keep downstairs, we can bring out to the sidewalk when it's time for pickup. You can see in the back, we have now put in a new stair, which goes up and over and lands the mezzanine on the upper right-hand side, limited seating upstairs. Downstairs, we have a little bit of a raised bar. When you come in the door, the gate has been removed, right, so now it's more friendly, it's inviting. We have lighting underneath that black cornice, which rides over the top of the entryway, so there'll be a pool of light there to invite you in. It really, we have two ADA, we have an ADA bathroom and a regular bathroom. We're doing our best to make this as accessible as possible and updating it. We have a very small, limited kitchen in the upper right-hand side behind the ADA bathroom. The kitchen is all electric, we have a, so there won't be any grilling there per se, there's not going to be, you're not going to have flame broil, you know, smoke development, we're gonna, we will have an exhaust hood, and the exhaust hood will vent through the second floor to the roof, and it will actually exhaust 30 inches, which is a code minimum, above any roof within 10 feet. Left and right of our property, if you look at the center of the roof, of the proposed roof plan, left and right, those buildings actually have higher roofs than we do, and there's no windows in those walls. So finally, lastly, just to document, you know, the, we're going to be replacing any of the windows in the back, which need to be replaced or fixed, we're going to be removing the gate, we have zoning compliant lighting signage, so an indirect signage on, lighting signage on the signage will be on the cornice. We are allowed 25 square feet of signage, we don't think we're going to need that much, and some of that 25 square feet may be applied to some signage on the door itself, although you're only allowed 25% of the door, of the glass of the door for your signage. So in this scenario, we could have three square feet maximum on this glass door, on the new glass door, and then we could have some signage, 21 square feet maximum on the black cornice.
And Dan, just to confirm while you're on that, so obviously you understand that any signage, once it is curated and prepared, if it does not meet the city's signage requirement, it would have to return to the board for...
Of course.
Okay.
Of course, yes, we're not asking for a signage variance at all, we're just saying whatever we do would...
Would comply.
Yes, it would, yes, as of right, so to speak. That's my testimony.
Okay, the only follow-up question I have is just to confirm that you highlighted some of the building improvements, but, so you're going to look to restore some of the interior components you discussed. In terms of building code compliance, just want to confirm, so the stairs you're proposing will now be code compliant?
The stairs are code compliant, and the bathroom is accessible, and the door, right now, the door is not quite 36 inches, which is what we need for egress, and it swings into the property. So the benefit of us having this recessed entryway, in fact, is that when the door swings out, which you need to do for egress, it will not swing over the property line, as is a problem sometimes. We actually have the space for the door to swing out, but it will be 36 inches wide. One of the problems with the door, we would have liked to have kicked the door, frankly, but I don't know if I have the photo of it. No, I don't. It's actually been, yeah, the door has sort of been filled in with, it's lost its glass, it's been filled in with a piece of plywood, it's not thermally broken, it's not, it's not great. So we're hoping to improve that and really make this a gem for the community.
Thanks, Dan. I have no further questions for this witness.
Your next witness.
Sure, so with that, I will call up Anastasia Alaj.
Do you swear that the testimony and the evidence will be the truth, the whole truth, and everybody, the truth? Yes. Please state your full names while you're last. It's Anastasia, it's actually Tsivazze, my legal name, Alaj is my husband's last name. T-S-I-V, T-S-I-V, A-D-Z-E.
You witness this morning?
Thank you. So Anastasia, unlike what you just saw Mr. Weaver go through, while you're definitely an expert in what it is you're going to present tonight, you're not formally an expert witness, so if you can just confirm for the board what it is, what your involvement is with this restaurant, so that we can qualify you.
So I'm one of the owners with my husband. We have this restaurant concept already upstate New York that has been there for two years. We just celebrated our two-year anniversary. It's a really loved place, it's open on weekends there only, because it's more of like a weekender village and near a ski resort. We kind of piloted the concept there, because it was safer and kind of more manageable, and it's doing really well. We have almost 150 reviews on Google with five stars that praise the food, the service, and the unique types of wines that we're offering. The wines are from the ancient world region, so it's not something that you would encounter very easily, it's, but it's from our culture, so it's something that we grew up with and kind of knew about before it became trendy. And the food is Balkan country food, which is, represents my husband's heritage, who is from Kosovo and grew up with that cuisine.
Thank you. And just to confirm, you and your husband will be overseeing the operations of this facility, is that right?
Yes, me and my husband will be overseeing the operation of the restaurant.
Okay, and you live locally, for what it's worth, as well, right?
Yes, we live just a few blocks, less than a 10-minute walk from the place, which is how we came across it. When we started thinking about bringing this concept to Jersey City, we were walking by and we stalked through the window and said, "Oh my God, look how interesting this space is inside." And we had, like our real estate agent reach out to the landlord, and he was really kind to give us the time to go through the zoning without, like, on the lease, so that we could go through this process and hopefully get your approval.
Thank you. So let's just turn to some of the operations a little bit, just so that the board can understand what it is that they're voting on this evening. So in terms of the proposed days and hours of operation, what are you looking at?
We're going to be open about five days a week, from Tuesday, or maybe six, from Tuesday to Sunday. We will be opening in the evenings, so the staff will arrive at four, we'll open at five, and we'll probably be closed by 11:00. Depending on how the community responds, it's possible that on Friday and Saturday we'll open later.
Okay, and to the extent that it becomes very popular and you want...
But just for drinks after 11:00, it wouldn't be, like, the kitchen wouldn't be open late.
Sure, and to the extent it becomes really popular, might you at some point consider adding a lunch hour?
Possibly on Saturdays. The place is quite, like, dark and more suitable for the evening operation, but of course, if our clients welcomed a lunch hour, we would happily add that as well.
Okay, and in terms of the number of staff, how many people are you expecting to work at the restaurant?
It would be probably four people during the week and up to seven people on weekends.
Okay. In terms of deliveries, so we'll start by going in, so how many deliveries do you expect coming to your property every week, let's say?
So there are two types of deliveries that we get, which is the food deliveries from pretty well-known companies that deliver to all the other restaurants in the area. I don't know which days they are in Jersey City, but it's usually two to three days that they deliver, and it's usually the first half of the day.
Okay.
And then there's wine deliveries that are usually a couple of times a week as well. We don't need it twice a week, so we probably get that once a week.
Okay, and how about deliveries out? So are you planning to have any type of, for example, catering service, or would it be more Uber Eats, DoorDash, things like that?
We don't have immediate plans for takeout, because our kitchen is quite small, and we want to make sure that we're managing high quality inside of the restaurant first. But of course, if we became popular, there are some items on the menu that are really suitable for takeout, like our burak pies, which are, some people say is Balkan pizza. I don't like that. It's not Balkan pizza, but they're these really large pies that are easy to share and very family-friendly, so I could see those becoming possibly something we could offer on Uber Eats one day.
Okay, but you wouldn't have like a delivery truck as part of your business that would live in front of the...
No, no.
Okay, perfect. And then I think that's really it. Oh, lastly, just regarding garbage pickup, I assume that would be the way that every other business operates with their trash pickup?
Yes, so my understanding is most restaurants in Jersey get a private service to collect their garbage, so we're definitely going to do that.
Okay, wonderful. I have nothing further for Anastasia at this point.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so my last witness, slight change of pace, instead of Charles, we're going to have Carolyn Worstel.
Do you swear that the testimony and the evidence will be the truth, the whole truth, and everybody, the truth? I do. Carolyn Worstel, W-O-R-S-T-E-L-L.
Thank you. So Dan, I'll just walk you through while I know what Eric's doing. While we do that, I'm just going to get you qualified, so if you can please give the board the benefit of your educational and professional background and the status of your license as a planner in the state of New Jersey.
As long as her license is current, we...
We know her, yeah.
Yes, it is still in good standing this evening.
Okay.
We know you.
Perfect.
Hi, everyone, good evening.
So Carolyn, just real quick, you heard the testimony regarding the proposed use of the space, as well as obviously the D1 component that we're here seeking this evening for having a kitchen in this restaurant facility, so if you can please walk the board through your justifications for the relief.
Sure, so we're going to start off with sort of talking about that, the use that is permitted here in this district and how it relates to what is being proposed. So the city has about six different restaurant definitions, and in this area, the cafe/restaurant category two is the definition of what is permitted. And these are small-scale restaurants with limited seating, engaged in the selling of light meals and drinks. That's the first sentence. And in that respect, this proposed project is 100% that. It's a small-scale restaurant, light meals and drinks, focuses on the wine bar aspect with light meals, as you've just all heard. The second part is, the cafe is designed to operate for substantial carryout service, delivery service, self-service, counter-service, which may, but is not required to include on-premise consumption. That is very, then, the last part is that no commercial kitchen or ventilation systems are permitted. So that last aspect is really where we're seeking the need for this variance. There is, the city does have a separate definition for restaurant category two, which is very similar, it says, "A restaurant or mobile food vendor whose primary function is the preparation and service by employees of food to customers as part of an operation designed to include substantial carryout service, delivery service, self-service, and which may, but is not required to include on-premise consumption, except that no drive-in, drive-through or service vehicles is permitted." So as you can tell, they're very similar in the fact that the idea is that you create food, and it can be eaten on-premise, it can be go out for delivery, or all these sorts of things. But this restaurant category two does not have that limitation for the hood, or the kitchen or the ventilation systems. So we're here because we believe that we're, we need that variance because we have the kitchen and the ventilation system. Additionally, it should also be noted that there are other conditions that essentially say the cafe/restaurant uses are permitted only on a ground floor. As you heard the testimony this evening, this is a space that has a small mezzanine, and so technically, under the city's ordinance, that is a second story, and so we do also need that D1 use relief, because we're going to be taking this use up to the second story, which is that mezzanine. When we look at D1 use variances, we look at the positive criteria under the Medici standard, which is, the property is particularly well-suited to accommodate that proposed use. This project is very limited in scope, you know, as was, you heard, the spaces there, they're doing some minor improvements, essentially to make it code compliant, you know, new stairs, ADA bathrooms, that's something that any use, no matter what it was, would have to do. And so really, the extent of the improvements here that are really impacting this is the fact that we're putting in the kitchen, we have some minor upgrades with that. But overall, you have a space that is particularly suited. It has, you know, it's in a great location, it has a really interesting interior that is going to be part of the character of what is being designed and proposed to function here. And that mezzanine character, the configuration, does make this a very difficult site to do something else with. You would have to do some substantial changes to this existing space in order to make it compliant, right? You would have to recreate essentially an entire second floor, that would either then have to be now residential, or, you know, you just, you can't, as it is today, this space would require some sort of de-variance relief, if it was even be used as like a retail space, whatever, because you have that configuration of the mezzanine, which is only accessible from that ground floor. So we really think that this is an appropriate use for this space, given its existing configuration. We think that the cafe use here with the kitchen is also appropriate. It's really consistent and in character with other sort of restaurant uses that are in the surrounding area. There's no forks given, which is actually directly across the street at 115 Brunswick. El Rancho, Ranchero, Taqueria, and Second Street Bakery are both about 300 feet from the subject property, and they all offer menus utilizing full kitchen equipment. So this type of use, this small-scale restaurant/cafe use is really consistent with the development of this neighborhood. And overall, I mean, this neighborhood, this is the neighborhood where people want to see these types of uses. This is a scale of restaurant that is designed to be attractive to the local residents, right? And that's why you want to live in this part of Jersey City, you want to be able to walk down the street to your little restaurant and have a little bite to eat and get a little drink of wine and go on a date night with your spouse if you have the chance, you know? So it's really, this is the type of use that you really want to see here, and this is a perfect space for it. There's also just sort of some general aesthetic improvements overall to this project that really is the benefit, you know, you're getting, replacement of all the broken glass, removal of that security fence at the front of the property, new paint, you know, so overall, this is taking a site that right now is, you know, not used, it doesn't look great, and really sort of activating it and creating an inviting space and use on the street. In terms of negative criteria, I don't see any result, substantial detriment, the general welfare, or to the intent of the zone plan, you know, the project specifically includes those safety improvements, the building code upgrades, code-compliant stairs, the existing non-compliant access to the second-floor mezzanine, and the ADA-compliant bathroom at the ground floor. It's not going to offend the zone plan, you know, these cafe, small-scale restaurant uses are contemplated, you know, as a permitted use, the cafe part, and, you know, overall, the scale of the business is really consistent with this overall neighborhood. You know, it's consistent with... Um, you know, it's consistent with the master plan in that it uh strengthens neighborhood-oriented commercial areas. And it's consistent with RC3 district, uh, which is sort of intended uh to promote that ground-floor commercial-oriented use while maintaining the scale of the surrounding neighborhood. So I think this project really is consistent with that. Um, it advances the purpose of the municipal land use law. Um, you know, it's an appropriate use. They'll promote the public health, safety, and morals consistent with purpose A, uh, by renovating that existing structure to be code-compliant and into and integrate, uh, introducing an active use to a currently vacant commercial space and promoting a a vis- a desirable visual environment consistent with purpose I, uh, by renovating and proving the existent, uh, existing facade. Um, so I think overall, this project really can meet those, both the positive and negative criteria, and that this is a really a great and appropriate use for this site.
Sounds great.
Carolyn, I just have one question for you. You mentioned uh date night with your spouse. Who has time for that?
Every once in a while.
Sounds nice. Um, with that, uh, madam, uh, madam acting chair, I have no further questions, and that would conclude my presentation. I would respectfully request the right to sum up or respond to any questions or comments.
Are there any members of the public that would like to speak on behalf of what's being presented? Do the commissioners ha- Do the commissioners have any questions, comments? Go ahead.
So m- my question is, I guess to Mr. Weaver, so every, you can sit down. That, so everything that's in there far as the cabinets is staying and just getting refinished, the ceiling and everything?
Yes, sir. Uh, th- th- one of the cabinets even is just gonna be
Oh.
Yes, sir. Uh, in fact, one of the cabinets, which is in, um, it's occupying the same zone that the stair will need to take, that's actually gonna be moved out and turned, so we can still reuse that, that, that beautiful, you know, piece of millwork.
Oh, yes, that's all beautiful.
It just needs to be, it really, it just needs to be cleaned.
Okay.
I mean, it's, it's fantastic.
Yeah, yeah. Um, my question would be, is it handicapped accessible?
So, uh, good question. There is one step at the front um to come in. It's not coming on. But yes, there's, there's one, if you, if you have your, your set in front of you, there's one step, which is right at the perimeter where the current security grading is. Um, w- we, without tearing out that slab and rebuilding that, in fact, if we do, oh, there we go, fantastic. Um, the uh if we do rebuild that slab, we would still have an, uh, like a seven-inch step out there which would not be able to meet codes. If we did put a ADA, the federal legislation, and the building code for accessibility, we would not be able to meet the ramp um without drastically impacting the building. Um, the, the, the toilet room, um, the facility in the back and the access to it will meet ADA. And if, if the board so chooses, you know, as a condition, we could, um, a lot of establishments have um, uh, service bells outside, so if you need, if you do need assistance, um, they can then, it'll alert someone inside who can then bring a transition element out, which can get you up into um, into the, the, the restaurant.
Okay. Right. Any more questions?
What uh, what's your estimated occupancy of the uh, the whole
Good question. Um, because we only have one exit, it's really not driven by floor area, it's, it's, it's driven by the amount um of people that we can push through that door, which with one exit by the state of New Jersey, um, is, is forty-nine people. So we're maximum forty-nine. Right now, we're showing forty-four seats, which would allow um five more, if I do math correctly today. Uh, five uh service people, but then there's also the entire area upstairs. Um, if it's too busy, that can be shut off, or it could be, it can be compartmentalized. So they can actually have a pretty good handle on the population. But no one wants to get shut down by the fire marshal, I, you know, so it's maximum forty-nine people, including the staff.
Any more questions? Eric?
Yeah, staff agrees with the testimony provided by the applicant's professionals. Um, Brunswick Street is one of the four corridors that permits commercial uses in the RC3 district, excluding legal storefronts. It's uh, as, as they demonstrated, they're not expanding, you know, the existing commercial space. They're essentially just doing uh interior renovation. For those reasons, staff sees, sees this as appropriate and recommends approval, provided, provided that the applicant agree to the conditions in the August fourth, two thousand twenty-five staff memo.
Yes, and we take no exception to those conditions.
Staff recommends approval.
Okay, good. So may I have a motion to approve?
Second. I'll make a motion to approve, um, my glasses on. The, I'll make a motion to approve the project case number Z two zero two five dash uh zero zero two nine, uh, one fourteen Brunswick Street.
May I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Zabluky.
I vote aye.
Commissioner Burns.
Aye.
Commissioner D'Angelo.
Aye.
Commissioner Shadid. Commissioner Barron.
Aye.
Acting Vice Chair Allen.
This is a great use of space. I kinda see your vision. I mean, it's your vision, but I understand what, what you're trying to bring. The oldness with the newness, so I'm a yes.
Acting Chair Rule.
Um, I lived there for like thirty years in that area, so I'm very familiar with it, and I love it. I think it's gonna look like a speakeasy or something. It looks really great. So I'm hoping to go in one day and have a glass of wine and have something to eat, so yes.
Motion carries seven in favor, none opposed.
Thank you, everybody.
Okay.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so our next case. Z two zero two five zero zero two zero, and it's one twenty-eight Glenwood Avenue, and Mr. Wine is representing the property.
Good evening, Madam Acting Chair. Um, Commissioners Benjamin Wine of Prime Tuvell and Misselli on behalf of the applicant, uh, for the record. Um, the application before you this evening is a continuation of an application that, uh, this portion of the application began two months ago. Unfortunately, due to quorum issues, could not com- be completed last month, but were able to, uh, to be here this evening with the goal of completing the application. This is also um a revised version of an application, if you recall, that, uh, that has been pending and seen before the board over the course of the last over two years. Um, the initial application was for a single building that was four stories tall for a four-family residential building that was ultimately denied by this board and, and is currently in litigation. Throughout the course of that period of time, the comments that we received really at that meeting, and I, and I think they were valid comments from this board, and we took them to heart, were that the design of the building, the massing of the building, especially the height, was something that while it complied with the R3 zoning standards, which is what the remainder of the block that's not university-zoned is, um, nevertheless, it, it felt like that four stories, and perhaps the design of the facade as well, was not exactly in keeping with uh, with what the neighborhood practically has. So during the course of this time, we had an opportunity. I, I can't tell you how many times I've been in touch with city planning, um, and the application we presented two months ago was basically a culmination of that effort to convert this to a three-story building, and every building up and down here, other than what's zoned R3, is predominantly three and four stories. So we're going with the three-story. And the reason that we did that is because we had compared our prior application to R3, which we felt was appropriate, given what's on the rest of the block. The board felt otherwise, and that's, of course, your prerogative. So what we've done now is we've compared it to an R1. Not only are we compliant with the R1 standards, we're under-compliant. So we don't come anywhere near what the coverage would be in the R1, both building and lot, and alt- and in fact, we're lower height-wise than what the R1 permits as well. And the reason that we chose R1 is because, other than a couple of very new, actually really one nuanced historic district for certain oversized lots, um, much larger than what we have, this, that is your most restrictive residential zoning in the city of Jersey City. You could argue the RH2, but again, we predominantly comply with the RH2. We're a little bit deeper, but we're actually narrower than what the RH2 would permit. So we went with R1, not just because this was an opportunity to say, all right, well, if that didn't work, what else can we throw at the board? It was really a calculated effort to take your comments to heart, which included that a four-story building was something that was not what you wanted to see at this site, and, and as well, the design features as well. So we were, we were here two months ago presenting our vision, and uh, some of the comments we received from the board, um, I, I don't want to put anyone on the spot, but I know Commissioner Barron was very particularly, um, particular about it, was the design of the building did not still feel like it met what the rest of the block was. So we took the opportunity over the last two months to redesign the facade holistically. Um, we're going to present that this evening because I think, and I hope, that you'll like what you ultimately see and realize that, well, yes, it's currently a vacant lot that is a community garden, that is zoned for a university district. I'd like to think we've made the case that putting a university use on a property that is no longer owned by the university, no longer cared for by the university, no longer interested by the university, is not the appropriate use of this property. And residential is. Residential is something that previously existed here, as you heard from our, our experts. Residential is what we're proposing, and we're now proposing it with a principal building that is three stories, matching the three-story look of the remainder of the block. So what I'd like to do this evening, because um, we obviously went through the bulk of our testimony two months ago, I'd like to recall my architect for the limited component of being able to speak to the revised facade that we, we worked on over the last two months. And then I'd like to call our professional planner, Charles Height, back up, just to confirm that this revised design aligns with his previous planning testimony and can be supported this evening. If I understand correctly, at the conclusion, of course, any questions of those witnesses is, is appropriate and fine, after which point we would proceed to staff comment and al- ultimately closing arguments. So unless I misstated anything, I'll defer to Mr. La Paglia. Um, but unless I misstated anything, or unless you have questions of me, I'd like to recall Mr. Patel to speak to the changed facade.
Okay.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yes, I do. Uh, Avart Patel, A A V A R T, P A T E L. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, so Avart, do you want to just confirm for the record that your remi- your license uh remains in good standing since the last hearing?
Uh, yep, it's been renewed for two years, and we're good till twenty twenty-seven, I guess.
Okay, we'll circle back on that in twenty twenty-seven. Um, so Madam Acting Chair, unless you have any concern with Mr. Patel, I'd like to have him continue and speak, again, in a limited capacity to um the revisions that he made between two months ago and today.
Okay. Go right ahead.
Um, I'm gonna start with a, with a front elevation and go to the floor plan to just talk about the, the changes we did uh towards the, the front facade. Yeah, no, it's, it's a little tight with the space, so. So we, uh, you know, took all the comments received during the last meeting and went back to the, the drawing board, especially on the front facade, uh, trying to blend it with the, with the other houses, which are uh Queen Anne-style houses, uh, you know, on the, on the street. And uh, we basically, you know, took a lot of those elements and, and tried to, uh, you know, design the facade uh around it. As you can see on the front, you know, uh, we had the stairs going up, we added a, a porch a- and then um continued uh along the, the entire facade, so. Uh, and then um, you know, uh, some of the column details, just to kind of accentuate the, uh, the, the, the front porch. Uh, and then added the, uh, the cone roof uh, uh, over the, uh, the entry element, which kind of creates that, that, that tower or the corner tower, which is uh, um, you know, predominant for, for Queen Anne-style architecture, and then uh, the bay window with a, with a triangular roof with uh some of the, the traditional detailing up top. Uh, mainly, the, the floor plan kind of remained as-is, e- except the, the, the front porch, but I just wanted to start with the, with the facade architecture and then walk you through the, the floor plan, uh, especially the way the, the porch is laid out. Now, I'm gonna go back to the um as you can see, um, uh, the open stairs coming to a, a covered porch, and uh, the garbage area is basically underneath that, and, and the, the porch kind of uh spans the, the entire width of the house. Um, and that's where the entry to unit number one is. And uh, on the, sorry, that was the first level. The second level, uh, again, the same concept, the stairs, stairs will come up to a, a covered porch. Uh, there's a door leading to the staircase going to the third level, and then uh, this porch will have uh, o- opening for the unit number two. The, the front door would be located here. Uh, the door would be more on a traditional style with a, with a glass light, uh, and, um, glass door with a, with a side lights. That's what we are proposing here. Um, and then on the third floor, again, we created the uh, the corner uh tower element, which is also like a, a hexagonal bay, and then a wider bay here with a, with a triangular roof on top. Other than that, the, uh, the, the number of bedroom count and, and overall layout remain pretty much the way we had it before.
Can, can we see the roof deck?
Oh, yeah, sure, sorry. So currently, the, uh, the two upper units will have access to the roof deck. Um, and let me just quickly take you to the, the floor below. Uh, so unit two, you know, there's a staircase leading to the upper level, um, and then, uh, that would ultimately go to the roof deck. Uh, and then same thing for, for this unit, this staircase will continue. So that's why, uh, on, at the roof level, we have uh two bulkheads. We are creating a green roof towards the back, and then the front, uh, it's more like a um mansard roof, which, which is a typical for this type of uh architecture. Um, it's not occupied space, it's just the, uh, the roof space, but uh, we wanted to create the backdrop for um the, uh, the corner tower and uh, the box bay. Again, the, the other elevations, the side and then the, the rear elevation pretty much remain same. Um, side elevation, there were minor changes with the um, with a, with a front porch and then um, uh, the, the bo- uh, the hexagonal base. Same thing on the, on the other side. And the last time we did present uh, like a streetscape comparison, uh, we did prepare another uh rendering, which is more, I guess, doesn't, the street doesn't look like, you know, the floor phona, it doesn't look like it, but all the, the buildings, we went back to the site, we took the pictures, and then the materials are, are closely resembles what's, uh, what's there uh today for
So Avart, for the record, I, I, this should be marked as a, whatever we're up to, four hundred and seventy-five. As this, I believe this is an exhibit that was not previously submitted. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And Avart, this exhibit, um, this portrays in a colorized, I'm not gonna call it 3D, I guess, somewhere between 2D and 3D version of what the experience might look like from the right-of-way. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. All right, thank you. Avart, were there any other changes since two months ago that you wanted to go over?
Uh, no, I think that pretty much sums up everything.
Okay, so would it be fair to say that the facade was the main design change that was based on comments received from the board? Is that correct?
That is correct.
And then the floor plans, as you mentioned, changed obviously in shape based on accommodating that new facade. Is that right?
That is correct.
Okay, and then it's your opinion as an architect that this new facade um adequately portrays the Queen Anne-style that has been so heavily spoken about throughout these proceedings. Is that right?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. I have nothing further for Mr. Patel at this time.
Thank you.
Okay.
Does Ms. Hygienes want to cross-examine? Go right ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Patel.
Good evening.
Um, so did the board make other, did they give you other feedback aside from the design?
I mean, most of the feedback were, was around the, the I mean, most of the feedback was around the facade and the way we had it, you know, the previous design wasn't really going well with the Queen Anne-style architecture. So, most of our focus was on the facade.
Okay, so, do you recall any of the other comments that Chairwoman Coyle especially made a couple of months ago?
If you can.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just going to read back to you from the transcript, which was, this is page 125 of the transcript. She said, Chairwoman Coyle said, "Okay, so I have some questions. First, I have to say, I don't think you've convinced me that this is a hardship, that the building has to be this size and have the additional building behind it. I don't see the hardship in building something that fits in the neighborhood and is not that many stories, that many bedrooms, et cetera." That's the first. And then she did talk about the style, which she responded to. I'm going to skip over that. And she said about the companion project at 124, "I would never want to see another building that size going right in between those other buildings there. So, I mean, I don't think it's consistent within the neighborhood, nor in the height with everything else that's there. So those are my questions, my comments." So, wouldn't you agree that the chairwoman's comments went far beyond just addressing the facade and design changes?
Yes.
Okay, and you haven't tried to address those comments?
If I may, we responded to those comments. They're not really architectural comments, those were responded to as planning comments. So we can certainly question and query Mr. Height on those when he comes up.
Well, I'm trying to question your witness. So, did your response as an architect address these comments that Chairwoman Coyle made about the size, the number of bedrooms, the accessory dwelling unit, the consistency with the neighborhood?
It addresses the facade and the architecture-related comments, but not on the floor plan.
Okay, so, and the size and the scale are basically the same as what had been presented two months ago?
Pretty much.
Okay, that's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Your next...
Sure, my next witness will be Charles Height, our professional planner.
I do. Yes, Charles Height, last name is spelled H-E-Y-D-T.
Sure, and Charles, your license is still in good standing this evening?
Still in good standing as a professional planner in the state of New Jersey.
Okay.
Wonderful. So, Charles, we'll get to that question in a second. But obviously, you've seen the revised design. Can you speak a little bit about the planning justifications and the general context with the neighborhood, especially given the upgraded facade?
Yeah, so, just to remind the board that the subject property is in the U University District in the city. Adjacent to this neighborhood, immediately adjacent is both the R3 and the R1. As you heard, there was concepts for R3 consistent design on this property. And what I think is very consistent with the R1 is what's being proposed with this application. So that has not changed, the consistency with applying the R1 standards to this subject property that is in the university district. So, as a reminder to the board, hopefully this is beneficial, we are requesting a use variance in the university district. Multifamily homes are not permitted. And just to further clarify what is permitted, colleges and universities, parks and playgrounds, dormitories, fraternity and sorority houses, or meeting halls. So it's quite exclusive list, it's for permitted uses. And quite frankly, part of the testimony that I offered two months ago still remains. The subject property is about 3,581 square feet. It's not really conducive to a college or university itself. As for a dormitory or fraternity house, one could be proposed on a small scale. And I would argue that a use of that nature would probably take a very similar form that you have today on this subject property. It's just a three-story, smaller-scale type of dwelling.
It could actually be four stories, is that right?
Correct. So, I think because we have an application for strictly residential housing and we're before the zoning board, we are highly sensitive and highly contextual to trying to make what would be the best application to this board. And with the revisions and some of the comments on the aesthetics, I do find that it has absorbed some of the consistency with the historic architecture of this neighborhood, of this streetscape, as we saw from the rendering and just internal discussions about some of the elements that are being incorporated to the facade. I do think that it only furthers my earlier testimony that it's consistent. And from a particular suitability, that this residential use in its appearance is now furthering that appropriate suitability for the subject property. I did want to also reiterate that we further special reasons. Purpose C is to provide for appropriate light air and open space. The whole approach is to find the right sort of zoning parameters to help guide the development on this property because the university district is absent of zoning provisions for this use. So we use the R1. It's the most simplest in its form. I do think we provide the appropriate setbacks and separations to regulate with the R1 standards. We're an appropriate population. This is middle housing, as we call it in the planning profession. So I do think we're furthering Purpose E, providing an appropriate population density. And lastly, and really even affirmatively with this reiteration or revision, Purpose I, to promote a desirable visual environment. I think we're achieving that with these revisions. So I wanted to reaffirm that as a planning purpose. I covered last time the bulk variances needed, the minimum buffer to an adjacent setback. Again, this is really a university district requirement. If we are applying it to the proposed... So we have a proposed setback of 2.9 feet. We're 10 feet required. That's again for a university use. But I do think the proposed setback is appropriate where it's occurring. And again, on this lot, being that it's a smaller lot than their standard lot that would accommodate a university, if you applied 10 feet on both sides, you would render the property only with a building with a 15 feet.
Five feet.
Sorry, five feet, thank you. 25-foot wide, minus 10, minus 10, leaves the five feet. So that's unpractical. And I do think, from a setback standpoint, that that's a hardship. So what we are proposing is akin to the R1 standards with the approximately three feet of setbacks on both sides. And then, secondly, the bulk requirement of maximum height of an accessory structure. This is in reference to the ADU. The ADU as designed is consistent with ADUs permitted in the R1 district. This requirement is specific to accessory structures in the university district. So again, the maximum height permitted is 15 feet. What we are proposing is 18 feet. But I do believe the three-foot difference is still consistent with both standards. But we do need a bulk variance for that. Hopefully, that was a summary reminder. I do think that the bulk variances are subsumed with the use variance. Again, they're not really intended to regulate this sort of proposed residential, small-scale infill housing. Switching gears for the negative criteria, again, just as a reminder to the board, we did work extensively on this design. I think the revisions, in terms of the aesthetic revisions, do actually advance the general welfare. They create consistency, more consistency with the neighborhood. And in my opinion, don't have a substantial impairment in terms of the aesthetics. We are proposing a structure where there is a vacant property today, a garden, a community garden. I realize that change. And it's going from a very passive use to what in my opinion is residential housing, which is one of the most passive uses, albeit with a structure on the property. But it's a very viable property in Jersey City. It's, again, 3,500 square feet. And it can accommodate the proposed housing. So, that's with respect to substantial impact to the general welfare. With respect to the impairment, the U University District is one of those relic districts. Clearly, the demand for dormitory housing has been removed or downsized with respect to St. Peter's need for off-campus housing, sorority housing, fraternity housing, student housing. It's all residential in nature, those are permitted. We have unaffiliated housing, which is not permitted. So, I'm not trying to mince words, but it's very similar and akin to some of the permitted the permitted use for dormitories housing. For that reason, I don't think it's an impairment of the zone plan or zoning ordinance. It's actually trying to reinforce that low-density housing is appropriate for this property and consistent with the neighborhood. And with respect to the bulk standards, I think they are subsumed in this case. And we are in lockstep with the R1 standards for what's being proposed. So, that's my summary testimony again. I was a little bit more detailed per se around.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I just have one follow-up. Those other uses you mentioned, those other housing uses, bless you, regarding the dormitory housing, fraternity housing, student housing, being that that could be a four-story building, even if it was only a three-story building, would it be your opinion as a professional planner that those uses would be more intensive and nuisance, in effect, than a much more typical residential housing unit?
I'm sure there's a movie about this scenario. I can't dictate if they are more occupants. They could, that sort of permitted use could be designed to accommodate more occupants, certainly. It's just the nature of dormitories, sharing resources, having more bedrooms. It could be, so yeah.
Thank you. I have nothing further for this witness.
Okay, anyone else? Do you have...
So, I have nobody else. I would respectfully like the right to sum up at the end. But I'm sure Ms. Hygienes has some questions for Charles.
Okay.
Just a couple of questions. Hi, Jen.
Hi.
So, is an accessory dwelling unit a permitted accessory use in the U-zone?
So, I don't... I would have to check the list of permitted accessory uses. The accessory dwelling unit is subsumed and associated with the principal use. The accessory structure is contemplated because there are setback requirements for accessory structures.
Right.
So the use is what we're requesting, the D1 use variance.
Okay, and do you know whether an accessory dwelling unit is a permitted accessory use in the R3-zone?
The, I know it's permitted in the R1-zone. We can probably have staff confirm if it's in the R3.
And what's the difference between an accessory structure and an accessory dwelling unit?
Good question. So, an accessory dwelling unit is specifically the use of detached accessory structure as another unit for housing. And an accessory structure is more of that general category that an ADU would fall under. And it would be detached garage, shed, there's probably a few others, but something like that. And accessory uses are all associated with the principal use.
Okay, and do you recall what the master plan recommendation was about accessory dwelling units?
So, I don't know if we covered that in our direct statement. So I don't want to misquote the master plan, I'm just reading my notes now. No, I don't want to misspeak on that, I don't have that in front of me now.
Okay, do you... I'm just going to ask you if this sounds familiar. Didn't the master plan recommend converting existing accessory structures into accessory dwelling units?
If that was the case, that certainly is the policy that the master plan sets. But the R1 allows for new construction, so...
But we're not in the R1, are we?
No, we are requesting a use variance. I think that's clear. And the ADU is associated with that use variance request.
Okay, thank you.
Does the board have any questions?
Board, does the board have any questions? No questions?
No.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. So, staff, I guess, is what we're up to.
Yeah. Tonya?
Iris? Let this where...
Sorry to interrupt. My clients did have a reaction to the new iteration of the plans. Is it okay if I put them on briefly? Okay? I thought you said we weren't going to... Oh, to ask them questions? Oh, I was going to have them, but they're not members of the public, I mean, they're...
I defer to Ms. La Paglia.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you guys were saying.
Oh, I wanted...
He's an objector, so he wants to testify.
Testify or question the witnesses?
I don't know what he wants to do.
No, 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 not... I questioned the witnesses already. It's just, we put them on before as fact witnesses, and now there's a new set of plans. So, they just wanted to add to what they said before the same way.
And misunderstands.
Yep, okay. Hi.
Hello, good evening, everyone. I do. Nathan McCormick, N-A-T-H-A-N. McCormick is M-A-C-C-O-R-M-A-C-K. Thank you.
Okay. Hi, Nathan. So, I just wanted to ask you, did you look at the revised set of plans for 128 Glenwood?
I did.
And what are your concerns?
Thank you, and thank you all for your time this evening. I live right next door to the proposed property. I'm sure some of you may be remembering me from a few times before, actually. Just to make a few notes, the revised plans for 128 Glenwood show an attempt to incorporate references to the Queen Anne Victorian style, that being the dominant style of our row of historic houses known as the Mayhew Terrace, built in 1895. Our row of historic houses is on the historic preservation element of Jersey City's master plan. However, also, the new proposition also includes more modern touches, which in my opinion outnumber the Victorian touches. The newly added details include a metal roof. Needless to say, there was nothing Victorian about a metal roof, especially a metal gable, a metal railing on both the stoop, as well as the second-floor balcony. The stoop does not match the neighboring properties. None of the original Mayhew Terrace homes has a stoop. If anything, the property that this does match is the same owner's newly constructed property at 124 Glenwood, whose staircase is drastically out of character of the neighboring properties. The new design contains three front doors, one for each of the units, so as to alleviate, I'm assuming, any shared space. Needless to say, none of the Mayhew Terrace properties contain more than a single front door. In my opinion, the attempt to make this property Victorian has only given it an identity crisis. It's neither Victorian nor modern. It's merely an attempt to build a bay-owned box with Victorian details, containing the same intensity and density as the previous design. However, if this owner were to decrease the size and scale of this home to match that of the abutting homes on both sides, I wouldn't be commenting on the choice of a facade. I recognize that people have different tastes. And were this an as-of-right project, my opinion would be irrelevant. However, our single biggest complaint about this project However, our single biggest complaint about this project has been its density and intensity. From day one, we have objected to a building that contains almost five thousand square feet of living space, compared to our home's nineteen hundred square feet. They could easily reduce the project by thirteen hundred square feet and still make a profit. But the prime objective is not to respect the integrity of the historic roams, excuse me, the historic row of houses. It's to maximize profit, regardless of the opinions of those who live there. And if we are willing to make concessions in order to accommodate a new structure next door to us, such as losing sunlight, smaller permeable surface area in an area already pr- prone to flooding, and worse parking conditions, shouldn't the owner be willing to make a concession as well? The purpose, one of the purposes of the uni- university zone is to preserve the, the neighborhood stability and residential quality of life. In my opinion, this does neither.
Thank you, Mr. McCormick.
Thank you.
Um, I have no questions for Ms. McCormick.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
So no, no more public. No, we're, that's a spouse is gonna get up and say the same thing. No. We, we've heard it before.
Did you have anything to add to this?
We wanna conclude this.
Okay, okay. That's fine. That's fine.
So now we're up to staff.
Are we, are we not opening public comment for the new?
That's such a crapshoot, to be honest with you. Somebody wants to comment on the facade? Well, here we go.
Yeah, it's, we had public comments before on, on, on this issue, on this case. I guess that's why. We heard everybody's comment. So I just, I'm asking right now, do we have?
You wanna, we're gonna limit it to the facade?
Yes.
Okay. Let's limit it to the facade.
But just one person.
No, no. Whoever wants to comment on the facade.
Thank you.
Okay, sure.
I was told I have.
Sorry, you told what?
Sorry, I have to give my name and all that first, right? Yes. Marion Roger, R.O.G.E.R. M.A.R.I.O.N.
I wanna see, I'd like to see the architectural plans up again.
That's okay. I'll start over again. My name is Marion Roger. And I'm sorry that I wasn't at the prior hearing. I had a conflict of schedule. And I'm very grateful, Mr. LaPaglia and Ms. Roger and everybody else for letting me come up and have a few moments.
And your address?
My address is fifty Glenwood Avenue. Apartment eight-ten, if you need to know. Okay. And I, I'm sorry, I do have them written down. And they're based on what I just heard tonight about the facade.
Just the facade?
Yes, ma'am. To change the characteristic of a building with its facade, one alters elements that are historically significant or contribute to the area's sense of place.
I'm sorry, may I please, uh, we have, you have three minutes?
Yes, I know.
Okay. Just, we, we just have to tell.
I know I have three minutes. Yes.
Yeah, we have to tell, we have to tell the public guys, well. Okay, no, go ahead.
One architecturally recognized element of this building is the scale and the mass and the size. But tonight we heard proposals for cosmetic enhancements to the facade to make it appear Queen Anne's style. There are times when the mansard roof is not even attributed to Queen Anne. I think the primary characteristic of the facade recommendation was its obvious absence of any effort to follow our esteemed Jersey City Historic Preservation Commission's previous reactions on June fifth to the hearing. Because there were a lot more of issues that were involved than the facade. And since you said I only had three minutes, I will not go on to anything else. But I will just say that I'm a big believer in words. Characteristic is something that's typical of a particular purse or place or thing. And it's a special quality or appearance that makes an individual or a group, or in this case is houses, different from others. And if this facade, facade, let's call it what it is, was really going to make it fit into the neighborhood, you wouldn't know that this house was just built. And, you know, I'm sixty-five. We have lots of sayings that we've all heard of. I think I have some peers up here. You can put lipstick on a pig. Thank you.
Okay. Go ahead.
Can we have the architect put the drawings up?
Well, I like to hear how, what you said. Yeah, because I wanna see that facade. I wanna see that. And I also wanna know which one it is. I mean, it's the white one. They just changed it, the white one. But why do they have to have that accessory dwelling unit out? Yeah, yeah, we need to see that again.
Yes.
Yes, please. Thank you. Can you expand that as much as you can? Thank you. Okay, good. It's that one. Okay, good. All right. Yes. Danielle, D.A.N.I.E.L.L.E. DeDamo, D is in David, A, D is in David, A.M.O. Seventy-two Hopkins Avenue, Jersey City, New Jersey, oh seven three oh six. Okay. Good evening. My name is Danielle DeDamo, and I completely understand that my comments must solely focus on the recent front facade revisions submitted after the June fifth hearing. I wanna first start by saying that this isn't just about architecture or zoning compliance for me. I attended St. Peter's College, now St. Peter's University. I remember this block as more than just buildings. I remember it as a healing, green, community space that was both educational and transformative. It shaped who I am. That legacy matters. It's part of why I became a public school teacher, and now why I serve as a volunteer commissioner on Jersey City's Environmental Commission. I've invested in what this, in what gets built here, because I've lived what this space can mean when it's treated with care. That's why it's so frustrating to see that the developer hasn't responded to community concerns with meaningful changes. What we got instead was a, was a cosmetic tweak. Our front porch tacked on in a last-ditch attempt to claim contextual sensitivity. But this addition doesn't reduce the overall bulk or scale. If anything, it amplifies it. By projecting the mass even further down the street, the revised facade increases shadowing on neighboring properties and exaggerates the building's visual dominance on the block. That is not compatibility, that is camouflage. Adding a porch doesn't undo the fact that the structure still fails to align with the rhythm, scale, and historic character of its surroundings. A superficial front facade change certainly doesn't reverse the core problem. This proposal still overwhelms the block, still casts excessive shadows, and still prioritizes maximum square footage over contextual integrity. And let's not forget that the same developer already misrepresented the scale of the building at 124 Glenwood, a few doors down, a mistake that this board rightfully called out. The community exposed that misrepresentation, risk representation, and we're asking you not to let it happen again under the guise of a minor change. A porch slapped on after the fact isn't an effort at good-faith design. It's performative gesture intended to satisfy minimum standards, not a sincere attempt to address the board's and community's concerns. You've heard the.
A second to go.
Sorry?
Thirty seconds.
Sorry. You've heard the community. You voiced your own skepticism. Please don't let superficial all- alliterations distract from the larger truth. The structure still does not belong. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I do. Uh, Christopher Perez, P.E.R.E.Z., uh, sixty-nine Union Street. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Um, I'm speaking today on behalf of the Jersey City Landmarks Conservancy. Um, we do not support this plan. Um, the recent adjustments to the facade, um, do not, uh, so I'm, I'm trying to redact some of my statements, 'cause I don't wanna duplicate, uh, some of the things other people said today. When we look at a facade, there are several facades on a site. Um, and we've been focusing on the front facade. And if we were looking at a flat piece of paper, that ha- looks a certain way. But if we're in real life, uh, looking at sites, and we're walking down the street, and we're looking at buildings at angles, uh, what you see is that you have a box that is being proposed. And that's very different than the adjoining historic houses that are on, uh, this, the historic master plan, where you have side gables, you have front gables. The roofs have slopes, which lends the character of, and the historic nature of the set of homes. The proposed project is a box with front facade that gives some dynamic to it. But when you look at it from angles, you're gonna see a wall. And that's one of the real issues with this proposed project. Um, is that it's really only the front facade that we're looking at, and we really need to be thinking about the side facade and all the publicly viewable elevations of the site. Uh, I'd just like to quickly quote, um, a staff membo regarding, uh, the historic nature of the section of the Glenwood Ave- of Glenwood Avenue dated August nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. It was written by Pa- Patrick Hashenberger of Hut- of Hunter Research, and Sarah Quinlin, who was then the Historic Preservation Specialist for Jersey City's Division of, uh, City Planning. "The block of Glenwood Avenue between West Side Avenue and John F. Kennedy Boulevard has a largely intact historic streetscape with few modern intrusions. Staff recommends that any new construction be compatible with the scale, form, setbacks, height, and historic character of the neighborhood." So if you look at this proposed project, it's not doing it in terms of form, scale. You have a real issue, because we're not looking at the sides of the building at all. We're just focusing on the front. And I believe that's the real issue that, that's not being talked about, and what the other, uh, speakers didn't speak about. So we do not approve this project because of those adjustments have not been made.
Thirty seconds.
This project just does not fit with the, the scale and the roof forms of the adjoining homes. It's creating basically a wedge that breaks up the cadence between them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I do. Stephen, S.T.E.P.H.E.N. Thompson, T.H.O.M.S.O.N., no P. One twenty-five Kensington Avenue in Jersey City. Thank you. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
And I'm gonna be quite brief. Um, I first, first thought I would give you just a little bit of my background, um, so I can put this in context. First of all, I'm a registered professional engineer. I also attended the School of Architecture and the School of the Environment at Yale. Uh, I was the first director of Water and Land Resources for the state of Connecticut, and the first executive director of land use for the state of North Carolina. So lots of different perspectives from which I look at my current neighborhood. My wife, who is a registered architect, and I have lived in the former mayor of Jersey City's home in Kensington Avenue, uh, backing up the Lincoln Park for thirty-nine years. It was built in nineteen ten. So I'm well aware of historical neighborhoods and of out-of-scale and totally inappropriate infill development. This proposed, proposal completely ignores both the historical and architectural characteristics of the adjacent homes, and therefore should not be approved in its current form. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening. Yes, I do. George E. Riley Jr., R.I.L.E.Y., also known as M.G. One twenty-two Glenwood Avenue, Jersey City, zero seven three zero six.
You gave him the permission. I was gonna say wrong.
Okay. May I have access to the screens?
Talk about the facade?
Yes. No, I, I just need to.
Oh, it's on.
No, 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 I mean, I have something. I, my printer didn't work, so I, oops, excuse me. I couldn't physically hand you pictures. Thank you. No problem. Thank you. Is it picking up? Okay, we've seen the, uh, facade, which truly is a facade of their drawing of what, one twenty-two, I mean, one twenty-eight. We look at this, this is a side view of one twenty-four and a vacant spot at one twenty-eight. And you can see that it massively towers over one twenty-six. And this is another picture. The third house in is one twenty-two where we are presently. And this is one twenty-two where we are now in one twenty-four. And this facade, just like the new one, is really nothing more. I have to commend Mr. Wine and his company for, you know, bringing the same pig to the dance, just putting on different lipstick. Because everything is the same, and we're just looking at something that they've dressed up, but it is not doing anything for the character of the neighborhood. And the picture that they originally put up, I have it here. This one, let me blow it up. That is there in the center, is, that is their one twenty-four. And right next to it, I don't know where that is, but that certainly is not one twenty-two. So I'm not sure what, you know, why they didn't just take a regular picture and then use that as opposed to somebody's made-up dream of what our street looks like. There's no grass like that, you know, doesn't show the steps up to anything. This is just another farce. And I'm completing. Thank you very much for your time.
You're welcome.
I do. Robert Fu. F.U. Four-one-four Fairmount Avenue, Jersey City. Um, so I'm gonna be very, very brief, 'cause most of what I was planning to say has been very well said by others before. Particularly the need to view the, uh, application in three dimensions rather than simply in, uh, as a two-D drawing. It appears to be, the design appears to be, um, created primarily for a true, two-D presentation. And as has been pointed out, we have to look at one twenty-four Glenwood to see what, um, how the actual massing, you know, the, um, of the project looks. I wonder if we could call up the side elevation? Is that possible?
I think we're looking at the facade.
Okay, that is, that is one, okay. But it has to do with the facade element, which I wanna see from the side.
If you're looking at the side, you're not looking at the.
You are seeing what, you are seeing the side of the facade. That, that's important. It's important to my point. Yeah. Anyway, I guess I'm particularly disturbed by the, um, the per- the fake pyramidal roof and the fake gable. Uh, I under- I, certainly the, you know, the fake, fake front, the fake gable is very much a Jersey City tradition. I have one on my house. But if we take a look at the side elevation, um, this example is particularly, um, half-hearted and fake-looking. It's very, the thing is perhaps two feet deep. And as you come up the street, you will immediately see that this, this is a front that's simply pasted onto a box. So, um, yeah, I mean, as I said, you know, most of what I, um, had planned to say has already been said before. I don't, yeah, we are not, we're certainly not quite there yet with this project. Thanks.
Yes, it will. My name is Dermot P. Ronan, and I reside at 159 Glenwood Avenue. R-O-N-A-N. Yes, thank you for your time. I live on the block and enjoy being on the block and a part of the Neighborhood Association that really get involved in bettering the block. And I do like the fact that we have development in our community, and I respect responsible development. In respect to this particular facade, I think like 124, that facade is so far forward compared to the existing properties on the block that the facade adding to it, to the facade, adding stoops and adding porches, et cetera, is really just creating further noise, further noise on the block that doesn't add any value or add any grace or charm that exist in the historic homes on the block. So it's not a fix. It's making things worse. It's also adding shadow and shade to the neighboring properties. It's already taken up, the development is taking up the full lot. Casting shade gardens, no windows, sea light. Adding this further bump outs and noise on the front of the building is not doing it any favors, and it's not doing the neighbors any favors, and it's not doing the environment any favors. So I just don't see the value in it, and I think they need to go back and do a better job with more realistic vision with respect to the existing homes and neighboring community homes in the historic districts.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Yes. Sergio S.E.R.G.I.O. Stifelman. S as in Sam, T as in Tom, I.F.E.L.M.A.N. 419 Fairmount Avenue of Jersey City, New Jersey. First, thank you for the opportunity to address this board. I'd like to say that I agree entirely with what has been said so far by the witness and by the members of the public. Particularly to the extent that it points out rightly that this project is out of scale, that this developer has failed continuously to engage with the members of the community in goodwill realistically. These are people who live there, so their needs and interests, which are very reasonable again, should be a priority. And also, the fact that I see in this project a tremendous detriment to land use and zoning. On this last item, the way I see this as a taxpayer, I'm not a zoning lawyer. If somebody intentionally and knowingly buy a property zoned A and wants, and knows this, wants to build something different as if it were Zone B, I can't believe that whatever provision allows for this type of major concession in what has been a very carefully studied and elaborated master plan, zonal or whatever it is. I cannot believe personally, and I will never believe, that whatever provisions afford this are not only for very, 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 very exceptional situations.
One minute.
What we see here is a business convenience. I cannot believe that whatever statues, ordinance allow this have this spirit of allowing a business convenience into somebody. In other words, this developer is... I'm sorry, is...
Thirty seconds.
He's changing on the city. The city is not changing on him. So, I mean, I think it's just a matter of, quite frankly, justice, common sense, perhaps even legally, I mean, I might have made a good argument here, and respect for the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, this is the last one.
I think there's one more after me. I think Charlene as well. Hi.
We've already, we've been here and we've heard a lot of the comments before, so. Are you going to speak on the facade?
Yes, I am. I wasn't here at the last meeting, so I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Kayla, K.A.Y.L.A., Burle, B-U-R-E-L-L. I've actually, oh, 197 Duncan Avenue. I do. So I've worked actually personally with Mr. Patel. I know he's a great architect. His designs are really good. I think that what we're seeing here with the facade change is an opportunity to maximize profit at the sake of the neighborhood. I've known, I know these neighbors personally. I've worked with them in my capacity at Lincoln Park North Neighborhood Association as Vice President, as well as the Chair of Development, looking at plans. And, you know, one thing that the facade doesn't correct is the Medici standard, which I know that you're all aware of in your capacity as zoning board members. So a project like this must meet a very high bar. That developer must show that the site is particularly suited for this type of use and that it won't undermine the intent of the zone plan. And in this case, it's clear the proposal doesn't meet that standard. It's a university zone, and the proposed building does not serve a university-related use. Market-rate luxury housing is not inherently beneficial, and its scale would undermine the purpose of that zone. It's vital that you, as the zoning board, listen to the voices of the people that live here. They're going to bear the long-term impacts of those decisions. When the community speaks, you're not just hearing complaints. I know that it's been a long night and you've heard many of these things before, but you're gaining insight into how zoning decisions shape the neighborhood, for better or for worse. So just please, I ask of you again to listen to my neighbors and take their words to heart. Thank you.
Thank you.
I do. Charlene Burke, B.U.R.K.E., 56 Duncan Avenue. And thank you, Commissioners, for the opportunity to speak again. I would like to begin by applauding the McGinley Square Community Board and residents of Glenwood Avenue and their neighbors for continuing to show up at every meeting and advocate for contextually-appropriate development that integrates seamlessly into their unique enclave of homes. Homes that some have remained in for more than 50 years and newer residents who envision perhaps this as their forever home. Any development considered for 128 should echo the bulk dimensions and design of the structures on either side and retain a rear yard for light, air, and sustainability reasons, matching those in this small row of five lots. I support all the comments made here tonight by others who have asked for the same in more detail. I ask the Commissioners tonight to reject the proposed project on the basis of incompatible bulk, density, and design with the existing residential homes and also charge the developer to meet with the community members and the neighbors before returning to present here in the future. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. And with that, does the Commissioners have any questions? Do the Commissioners have any questions, comments?
I have one question for the Mr. Goodman. Last meeting, I think there was something about you guys sit with the community and come to an agreement with them somehow close the project, right? Did you?
So Commissioner Shadid, I'm going to be very thoughtful about how I say this, I think how I respond to that. In the last two months, we revised the plans since, ahead of actually what would have been the last meeting, and shared them with, we sent them around. They were posted on the website, and we gave the opportunity for any further communication. Would like to see them. I spoke to, I'll take that back. I shared it with Council for the Objectors and suggested that, you know, she should have a copy of it, and I'm open to any discussion. Again, I'd like to be very careful, and I'm not trying to dodge your question at all. I have been open for the last three years to conversations. I have met several times with the members of the community. We have gone through, this is our eighth iteration of this application and this project over the course of the years. And most of the time, we are met with not being responded to with requests to meetings. So to answer your question, I have not been able to meet with the community on this latest iteration of the plans. There's been opportunity, and I'll just leave it at that. I mean, I think the question coming out of last meeting is, would you, to the extent there are going to be changes, would you be open to sharing them, meeting with them, if they'd be open to doing that? And the answer is unequivocally yes. Unfortunately, it needs to be reciprocal.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
No, let me hear it with Carl.
Well, she might actually, Tanya might refer to it. Maybe I'll just wait till after you say, because it might be in your report.
No, say whatever you have to say, Carl.
All right, well, I was going to ask, the one thing that seems to stand out that doesn't really fit facade-wise is the metal roof and the other part. I mean, it really shouldn't resemble the houses next to it. It does stand out, like, stands out. It's the only one with metal roof and stoop, so are you guys willing to change that and address that to make it look more?
Absolutely, without a doubt.
I would definitely make that a condition no matter what. Now you talk, because I have some other questions.
I have another, I have a question. My concern is that accessory dwelling unit in the back, is that, and I understand what the group is trying to say, that yes, the facade has changed, but the length of this unit is going all the way back. And I see that you just put in the back another dwelling unit. Why is that? I mean, I think that was the concern of a lot of these people here, that that would be eliminated if nothing else. What is, is it still there? I mean, that's a concern for them. Was that addressed?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, I'm happy to explain why it's there, right? The, and I don't want to belabor the point, but I think it's a good question. When we began this process, as I said at the beginning, in our opinion, the closest context for, we all recognize, as I said at the beginning, this is university-zoned. Anything that's done here requires a variance. There is no question. Even if we were going to go with a dormitory building, as Mr. Height said, you cannot build it five feet wide. You would require some type of relief, whether from this board or the planning board. So we felt that what was appropriate three years ago was to compare to the R3 because with the exception of, I believe, one of the houses on the block, all the other non-university uses are zoned R3. And actually, since there are a couple of U-zoned properties on that block that this board has granted approval to convert them to residential, I think it's 136 and maybe 140. So that's always been the recognition that this is appropriate for residential use. We tried that with the R3. The feedback that we got is that that's not the correct zoning context. So we went back to the board, to our board, our drawing board, and said, what might be appropriate, R1? Well, R1 allows an ADU, and yeah, there's no question. This is a different arrangement of the four units that were previously proposed. We're not hiding that. We're not suggesting that there's not still four units in a different orientation. But the reason that we have that is that in any zone in the city of Jersey City, the four, any residential zone, the four units in some arrangement would be appropriate. So you heard some comments regarding, well, can't this just be a one or two-family house? Why can't we just meet what's right next to it? This is not a historic zone, much as many of the people who have spoken would like for it to be a historic zone. The city has not designated it as such, and accordingly, a number of those other houses can be, assuming they get demo approval, knocked down or expanded rearwards, even without demo approval, to convert those into the same four units that are being proposed. So to answer the question, we went with an alternative arrangement in the hope that this is less massing, right? We're a story less. It's certainly, I think you saw from the rendering, it's more contextual from the street frontage. But to forego adding a fourth unit is planning for today and maybe even for tomorrow and next year. It's not planning for the life of this building, which will be 100 years from now, when all the other buildings are going to have four units, if not more. So to answer your question, we heard a question about the ADU. Again, I welcome feedback. There's no question about that. But to answer it directly, the reason it's being proposed is because four units would be appropriate in any residential zone. And I'm curious to you, Madam Acting Chair, you know, what your perspective is on that, you as a board.
I'm concerned about that unit. Because, so what you're trying to do is, instead of doing the four units, then you're just going to put that one extra unit in the back.
Right.
How is that, is that going to obstruct the view of the rest of the other? I'm assuming it will because it's just going all the way back, so that's going to obstruct all kinds of views.
So it's...
I would, that's why I wanted, initially wanted to see it on the architectural plan. I wanted to see it so that I can refer to it. But the gentleman changed it because he used his phone, or else I would have referred to it. I would have liked to see the back, to see how that looks. If that's possible, would that be possible for me to see it again?
Sure.
Thank you.
And while he brings that up, again, Charles spoke about an accessory structure being permitted. So, well, yes, an ADU is a specific type of accessory structure. That size and shape, were it a detached garage, were it a shed, could be in that location. So from an obstruction perspective, even in a university zone, you could have a four-story dormitory building and then a, I don't know, a shed housing equipment in the back in the same orientation.
So that ADU is going to house how many people?
One. It's a single family. It's one...
Two stories?
Yeah, correct, yes, with living, bedrooms above kitchen living, correct.
I see. Can I see the back of that? Just the back, if I may?
And again, that's three feet taller than the 15 feet that a accessory structure would be in a university zone back there. So we're really talking about, it's not going to obstruct any more than a permitted accessory structure would, but for three feet in height, I suppose.
Okay. Please.
So the, this elevation is facing the rear of the primary structure?
I see. That is section, okay.
How far back is the ADU from the back of the house itself? What's the space in between?
It's about 12 feet, 13, 2, sorry.
Okay.
Is, I'm just going to be blunt too, if you don't mind.
Please.
Is that ADU really necessary for the project to go forward?
It's part of the proposal, and out of respect to you, I'd have to ask my client before answering. Yeah, but, and if you'd like me to do that, I'm glad to do that.
So that's not going to leave any space for any yard, any yard or anything?
I think I missed the, it's how many feet?
13 feet.
It's just 13 feet from that? I see.
Yes.
Because the way it looks, it's really not a yard because it's jammed in between two structures. It's like a space.
So the ADU ordinance, again, where it is permitted in the R1, actually allows for five feet, and it's, yeah.
Okay. All right.
So Tanya, if we recommend that they get rid of the ADU, do they have to come back to us? Okay. Okay.
So, any more questions? That's it? Any more questions, comments? Tanya? Okay. Yeah, that's right. Oh. I do.
Give me one second, we lost our AV guy. Anybody see Eric?
Bathroom break.
Give me one second, so I can figure out. No, everything is good, because it's up here. No, no, I don't know why I forgot, yeah. I, yeah, that I did right, yeah. Okay, it's been a while. So I just want to refresh everybody's memory and get us all in the same headspace. The picture in front of you, do you guys have the same picture?
I don't, I don't have the picture. Oh, okay.
Good?
Yeah.
Okay, so the yellow dotted line indicates the property. And there's also a little, little red arrow. That'll show you where we are on Glenwood Avenue. And if you can take a look, we're gonna go down a little bit more. And you can see, this is, this is the same orientation, but this is the zoning map. The purple is the U-zone and the yellow is the R3-zone. And for benefit's sake, I know that we haven't really talked about the R3, but the R3 is a very interesting zone in the sense that it permits a variety of things. And it takes into consideration that so much of the city has some one and two family, three family, and apartments all thrown in between. So the R3 is a zone that tries to do way more than it can or should, right? So R3 permits townhouses, four-story townhouses, three units, and then it permits all the way up to eight-story apartment buildings. The yellow dot in the purple area is the applicant site. So everything to the west of there is, west, right, yeah, west, is university. And so you can kind of see that this property over here and this is the all the university zoning. So how do we get here? That's what I really kind of want to talk about a little bit now. So the first time Jersey City ever does zoning is 1931. And it's very basic in its zoning. We really just kind of have two residential zones. One that really talks about just two families and one that expands to talk about apartment buildings, et cetera. A little bit more density. So this area would have been zoned residential B, which would have permitted apartment houses, rooming houses, clubhouse houses. A lot of the buildings that you're seeing on the bill, on the block were either A, built before 1931, so built before there was any zoning, or B, built within this timeframe. A lot of Jersey City was built out before 1960. So what you're looking at is either the result of the 19, the early zoning or prior to. Then we did another rezoning in the seventies, which was pretty traditional all across the country, with a kind of reinvention for urban renewal, malls and things like that. So we're, we're looking at cities in a completely different way. However, for this block, we continued to zone it R2, which is very similar to the B from the 1963. Right, so it still just means that you're allowed to have two units, row houses, townhouses, garden apartments, et cetera. 2000 comes and we do a new master plan. There's a difference between zoning and the master plan. The master plan is that big picture idea that the MLUL says that we have to do every 10 years to create a vision and a path forward. And then we write the zoning based on the master plan. We also review variances based on the master plan. And if variances are against the master plan, part of the testimony has to be reconciliation with the master plan. In 2000, St. Peter's and JCU, majority of the universities had met with planning and asked to have support in expanding their campus. So the answer, in the 20, in the 2000 master plan, you'll see language that says that. That talks about how we are going to support our local colleges and build up our campuses. And that's how we get to.
To 20.
Too fast? That's how we get to the university zoning. Okay? So in 2000, we go from having conversations about residential blocks, whether those be lower-scale apartment buildings or one and two-family houses, to only permitting university uses. Now, the correlation between the university use and the buildings the university owned were the same. Right, so a lot of what you're seeing in purple were owned by St. Peter's. So the city worked with St. Peter's in order to make sure that their property that was, that they owned, was zoned for university. Of course, now we're 25 years later and St. Peter's has sold a bunch of their property. This is where we are now as a result of St. Peter's having sold property, having demoed some of that property and so on. So now looking at the 2020 master plan, which is one we just recently did, we took a look at these districts. So this isn't the only district in our zone that was just kind of one, one lens, right? So we have the university zone, and I'm sure you guys are familiar with the medical zone, right? And we have a government zone. And it doesn't allow for any other uses, residential, anything like that. So part of the master plan was to say, we need to relook at the university zone because in the 20 years that has passed, St. Peter's hasn't continued to build their campus. They've gone in reverse and they've started to sell their property. But instead of having this one very narrow university zone zoning, we should at least consider an overlay, but allow for residential uses. Because the reality is, the homes built before zoning or built within, before 1963 were residential. They weren't sororities, they weren't dorms. And so the attempt in the 22, 2020 master plan was to kind of reconcile what was on the ground with the zoning. And so there was language and that, we, we, since 2020, we've really kind of been enacting the master plan in phases. This has not been one of the areas we've been able to get to yet. But we've tried to kind of make sure that the community and everybody's on board. And with this involvement, we haven't really moved forward with the university or the medical zone. So I just kind of wanted to give you some background as to like, how are we looking at an area or a zone that's university zoning, but when you look on the block, it's apartment buildings or residential, how, how, homes? So the master plan again did suggest that we at least allow for residential and at least have a university zoning overlay. So that is in line kind of with the master plan, which is to say that we need to open this area back to residential, allow for those, allow for those uses. The chart in front of you is a comparison chart. Commissioner Chet Rothman, who is no longer on this board, but was on the board at least in 2020, always used to say, if it's not that zone, I don't want to hear about it. But what I need to do is to tell you that the reason they used the R1 zone was because I told them to. So the last time they met with me, they, the last time the application was in front of us, it was for a four-story, four-unit building. And I said, you need to build R1. Because even though the homes to the east were in the R3 zone, they were really R1, right? Like the R1, which is really just, we used to call it the one and two-family housing district. Now we call it the neighborhood housing district. And we have a density, but it's a three-story, typically two-unit building, which is that row of homes that we're looking at that a lot of people are referencing this evening. So the direction to use the R1 came specifically from me to, and at least match kind of what was there and the intention that was there. There have been also conversations to rezone some of the properties within that like little area, either RH1, RH2, or R1, to take into consideration that they are on our historic master plan list and that there is some language or reason in there that we can have a conversation about preserving or having more preservation language for those houses, right? So if you look at the standards that are in front of you, you can see that the use itself, so the university is the left. Obviously, the standard is all the way to the left, then the university, then the R1, and what's proposed. And you can see that the only real deviation is for the use, and that's the residential. All of those things are kind of subsumed into it. So 42 units an acre gives you three units. 42 units an acre is the density for the R1 zone. The R1 zone permits three units here as of right, and it does permit an ADU. That, this is pretty much matching exactly, not pretty much matching, this is exactly matching the, the R1 zone. Side yard, rear yard, all of it, three stories, 33 feet, coverage, et cetera. And parking. So there's a standard within C and D that unless you have 26-foot wide lot, you can't have parking. So this is a 25-foot wide lot, so no parking is permitted. And the only real height standard here, or the height deviation, is relevant to the accessory dwelling unit. And that's because within the zone, within the university zone, the accessory uses are capped out at, I think, 12 or 15, 15. And this is 18. In the R1, in anywhere we do permit ADUs, so let me go over real quickly where we permit ADUs. We permit ADUs in the R1, RH1, RH2, R2, that's not here, R2. But no, not the R3, that's where, I'm pretty sure it ends. I have to double check on the R2. And they are permitted to be 18 feet tall, two stories. So all that to say that, that's my report. I really, like, my goal here is to kind of get to, get to you to a point as to tell you why you're looking at a project the way that it is. We have been working, Mr. Ryan, for a while, trying to get him to a project that is kind of amenable, that we could agree on. And matching the R1 is really what we requested and they were able to meet. I can't speak to the design standards necessarily. I think the general design standards are being met here. The extra level of historic design standards are not relevant here. And they wouldn't be relevant in the university zone either. So staff does recommend approval. The conditions are pretty standard. I think the report has at least been on the, on the website for a long enough time. So instead of wasting any more time and reading them all into the record, can you just acknowledge that you've read them and you're fine with them?
Certainly.
That is my testimony.
Okay. With that said, do you have, Carl?
Despite that. And look, I get it. I mean, the weirdness of this project is like you have competing zonings one lot next to the other. And you're trying to somehow make this work and appease everyone. And unfortunately, this is just a very weird scenario, the way it is. And it also looks like, obviously, this has been adjusted a lot with your, you know, work compared to where it was in the university zoning and so on and so forth. But I still want to keep the condition of getting rid of the metal roofs and the metal stoop. I would, because that, it has to match a little bit better.
Understood.
I just want to make sure that's on record as a condition. If the commissioner's there, is okay with that.
Sure. And could I request a break? I'd like to call my client, I know there have been a couple. That's one of the things I just want to confirm before I commit to, but would that be?
Yeah.
Yeah, you can use a break, we can all use a break, so. Okay, we'll have a what? We'll have a 10-minute break.
Thank you. All right, so Madam Chair, Acting Chair, oh, do we want to wait?
We waited, what about you, so?
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay, go ahead.
I'm sorry. One of the, so I think that the biggest comment that came up, I think Mr. Zablicki raised it regarding the, the metal roof. Yeah, I mean, my client, after speaking to him, has said, despite going through a number of design changes, he's willing to change that and he's willing, he's, he's asked that you actually tell us what you want there and he'll say yes to it. Like, there's no, I just, he doesn't want to go back around the, let's not have some clarity, like, let's, let's have some clarity. And let's, let's find out exactly what that recommendation is.
I don't know anything about.
Well, I'm not building a roof, I'm telling you that right now.
I don't know anything about roofs, so.
Can that be left just to the discretion of staff to like, match it up, match it up with whatever?
Yeah.
Most appropriate with the, the block?
You can leave it to staff.
Material-wise and.
Yeah.
Okay.
Whatever he decides to coincide with the other.
We're fine with that. I mean, Ms. Marion's been nothing but reasonable and helpful, we'll, we'll happily accept that. So with that, I'll be very brief, but I think you heard the testimony this evening, you heard the testimony last time. You've really heard the testimony for three years about multiple iterations of this project. I couldn't have said it any better than Ms. Marion in her report, that this is appropriate for residential use, this property. You cannot, it's not impossible to put a university use here. It's just not the right use for this property. The right use is what it historically was, which was residential, and what, what we're proposing, which is residential. We tried at the R3 standards and ultimately the board felt, which is their right, that it's not appropriate for the zone despite the fact that, as you saw, all the other residential, all the other non-university zone properties on this block are R3 zoned. And so we took the initiative to go back to Ms. Marion and say, well, what is, what is appropriate? Like, I like you guys a lot, I enjoy being here, I present before this board all the time. I don't want to be inefficient. And I don't want to be before this board with multiple iterations of an application. I want to come with an application that has been vetted out by your professional staff, as well as this board and its professionals, to come up with something that everybody feels is appropriate for the site. I also want to stress, let not perfect be the enemy of good, right? You've heard, there's no question, you heard comments from the public. A lot of the members of the public are the same public that, that you've heard before, that we've engaged with in the past. And I, and, and I appreciate those comments. But without speaking out of turn, we've gone through seven or eight iterations of the facade design, of the this, of the that. We've made changes throughout the process. And ultimately, it's almost like nothing is ever good. So I, I hate to stand here and say it, but we've tried. I feel we've tried, my client feels we've tried, my professional team has, has feel that we've tried, has felt that we've tried. And at the end of the day, if, if the answer is just going to start with what we were initially told and we have in an email, which is, we want to see this remain green space, to a resolution that was put forth to city council and adopted that would ultimately allow the community to apply to the Green Acres program to keep this as green space, there's unfortunately no middle ground between green space and non-green space. And so we have moved heaven and earth to try and come up with a design here that is ultimately appropriate. As I said last time, and I'll say again, if there's other elements of this design that this board feels they would like changed, I, during the denial, there were comments about the facade design. So we've reacted and we've done whatever we possibly can. Ultimately, what's before you, and I'll, I'll conclude with this, it's a land use application, right? This, and I don't want to lose sight of that. This is an application for development. An application for development, as you well know, and I'm speaking to you, I'm speaking to the public, rises or falls on the merits of the legal arguments and the planning arguments for that application. This is not a different iteration of, of the application, this is this application. And we put on test, architectural testimony, we put on planning testimony. You heard testimony from your own planning staff recommending the approval. So when you have an applicant's planner and the city's own retained planner recommend that this is what's appropriate for the site, it should speak for itself that the proofs, which are that we have to show that the positive and negative criteria, the, the benefits of the project as enumerated, substantially outweigh any detriments. Those are substantial detriments, substantial impairments, not just, I don't like this or I don't like that. It has to be substantial. And that we have to show that the site is particularly suited for the residential use. So with complete and utmost respect, I stand here tonight, after what is two meetings on this application, but three years of my life dealing with a relatively small application, asking you to please approve the application as presented with the multiple stipulations that have been put on the record since, since the inception of this project, so that we conclude this and ultimately can bring something to this vacant site. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, with that said, I think we've had no comments. Okay.
Good evening, commissioners. My name's Cynthia Hagiannis. I'm here on behalf of the owners of the neighboring properties, Sharon and Nathan McCormick. And I know this is a little bit of a retread because we had the prior application. because we had the prior application a year or so ago. So, first, I, I just wanted to say, the applicant has the burden of proof. And I think Mr. Wine just addressed that. And the positive criteria that have to be met, the, the key prong is particular suitability. So, back in January of 2024, Mr. Hay's colleague Carolyn Wurstel came before this board and testified that an R3 compliant project was particularly suitable. Couple of months ago, June 2025, Charles Hay came before this board and testified, "Well, now we think an R1 compliant project is particularly suitable." My clients came up here, and a number of members of the public, and this is actually one of the exhibits that was presented last time, and this for the benefit of some of the board members who weren't here in June. They, so our planner and my clients, they felt that something similar in size and scale to the adjacent homes in that particular historic row, a one-family or two-family, that that is what is particularly suitable. So, I tried back in June to pin the applicant's planner down, Mr. Hay, and I said, "Well, how would you analyze what's best? How can you have everything be particularly suitable?" And this was the answer I got. "No, and I want to make clear, we're not proposing everything's particularly suitable. Adjacent properties are residential uses. Adjacent properties are multifamily, are less dense, one and two-family. What we're proposing is a residential use. That's consistent, and that's what we believe meets particular suitability. Not industrial, not institutional, not rail yards, nothing of those sorts, but the general use of residential." So, the applicant's planner testified that something residential is particularly suitable and not industrial, not, not institutional. Tell us something we don't know, that we already know that. So I'm not sure this generic testimony that a residential use is particularly suitable meets the applicant's burden of proof. And, and there was nothing on the ADU. There is nothing in the record about why an ADU is particularly suitable. And I find them already highly problematic in the R1, in the RH1, in the RH2 zones. I think that this board isn't obligated to okay that spreading to all these other zones. I think that they may, may even want to reel back what they're allowed to do. The master plan talks about converting accessory structures into accessory dwelling units. They never, there was never a recommendation to allow new construction, to just stick a house in the backyard. And to me, if I were a builder, I don't even think it makes sense. I think you're getting rid of green space. That probably adds value to the property. If I were considering buying a condo in a three-family house, I don't know that I'd want to pay as much if there was a house in the backyard. So I'm, I'm not, I don't know why it's attractive to developers. I think they like to just maximize, they have this impulse to maximize whatever the zoning allows, or whatever they can get away with. And I don't, I don't think they're, it's working that well here, and I think the board has discretion. Now, and I, and there is no, I don't think the applicant met its burden of proof on the ADU. Now, the R1 as default zoning, you saw that it was a column on the plan. There's not an entitlement to an R1 compliant project, just as there was no entitlement to an R3 compliant project. And what you're being asked to do sounds an awful lot like spot zoning. And the U-zone does talk about residential. It promises neighborhood stability and residential quality of life. And there, and as you've seen over the past year, there's been a lot of upheaval due to St. Peter's selling off its properties. Maybe St. Peter's is having financial problems. But when you live in the university zone, your fate is tied to the health of that institution. And here, these neighbors have seen an incredible amount of change on the block. And I think that for that, and, and, and the developers had his other R3 compliant project, I think they're entitled to certain protections that the zone affords to them. Because they have to put up with dormitories. They have to put up with large dormitories being converted to residential. And, and they have to put up with sort of this wholesale divestment of properties. I think that the U-zone is still important. Now, we had the staff testify, well, the, you know, and I liked that historical perspective. I thought that was so interesting, actually. But I thought there was kind of a very, you know, she, she was, seemed to be saying, you know, "The university zoning's not really working. The university's not getting bigger. It's sort of selling things off." And I don't believe the answer to that is to spot zone. And I think we almost had an, I was like, what I thought was very incredible and admission from planning staff that she's recommending spot zoning because the U-zone isn't really working, or zoning by variance. So that, if the university zoning's not working, this board doesn't have the power to rezone by variance. That is a, something only the governing body can do. So, if they want to go back to the drawing board, start to implement some more of the master plan, fine. But that's not within this board's purview. I, I do think it is very astute for, that the board pointed out some of the issues with the ADU. I, I think that's leading, you know, that, that instinct to want to kind of cover every square foot of, you know, the lot is leading to some other problems with the project, like having to have a green roof now so that the, the units two and three can have some outdoor space. If they didn't have the ADU, maybe there'd be enough outdoor space for people living in the building. And I did just want to, you know, I think you've heard from the neighbors, there's a certain amount of healthy skepticism about the developers' representations that this is going to fit in, even though they've made, like, what seems to be an attempt to, to make some design changes. But the, but as, as you've seen from the photos in a picture's worth a thousand words, it's, it, it's, the other companion project didn't fit in. And I think there are some similar, if you really study the plans, there are similar problems with this project. The front facade, it does not match the prevailing setback on the block. And the height is bigger, and, and the light and air is going to be interrupted. And I wanted to just make one final point, or just to correct the record. I did check my emails when Commissioner Shadid had asked the question if there, if they, we had been contacted to meet with the developer. And I just checked my emails, and when Mr. Wine sent the updated plan, he, he wrote an email to Tanya. I was CC'd on the email. There was no, maybe there didn't have to be, but there was no invitation to engage or have a meeting. And the last time we met was on the prior applications. Well, you could, yeah. But, but we didn't, we didn't meet, and, and, and we weren't invited, if that's the impression you got. So thank you, thank you very much. This has been a bit of a saga, and I appreciate everybody's time.
Thank you so much. Okay. I just want to thank everybody that took their time to come out. I know we've heard from the residents, we've heard from the public, and we've heard from the lawyers, and we've heard from everybody. So with that said, Eric, can we have a?
We need a motion.
A motion? Oh, I'm sorry. May I have a motion?
Okay. I'll make a motion. I guess, let's make a motion to approve case number, one sec. Case number Z2025-0020 with the conditions that were discussed and agreed upon. The roof and the stoop.
May I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Eric, now may we have a roll call.
Yeah. Commissioner Zablaki?
I vote aye.
Commissioner Burns?
Aye.
Commissioner DeAngelo?
Aye.
Commissioner Shadid?
Aye.
Commissioner Barron?
Aye.
Acting Vice Chair Allen?
Yes.
Acting Chair Arul?
I gave this a lot of thought, but I vote aye.
Okay. Motion carries, seven in favor, none opposed.
Thank you, everybody.
With, with added conditions.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Okay. Our next case, it's Z02...
But we're not ready yet. It's only, it's not even 10.
No. And that is 626 Palisade Avenue. And it's Stephen Joseph. I don't see him either. I don't know. Are you representing Stephen Joseph?
Oh, you are.
You're not Stephen Joseph.
I'm not Stephen Joseph. I'm twice his age, and he's on vacation, and I'm here.
We know, we, we know who Stephen Joseph is.
Yes. Yeah, so he's on vacation. My name is James Bruno. I'm with the firm of Costano Quigley Terami, representing the applicant. This is an application for site plan, as, as well as variances, which we have three witnesses who will go through the variances with you, and we'll try to be as brief as we can. It's a, it is a...
Let's finish this. Let's try to finish this thing.
It's a mixed-use building, 24 dwelling units with 838 square foot of ground for commercial. The commercial is what requires the use variance. And again, I have three witnesses. Mr. Weckman will be first, and he can go through those with you, what they are and justifications for them. Then we have our engineer, who will also testify briefly. And then Carolyn Wurstel, who is our planner. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Weckman.
Thank you. Yes, I do, thank you. William Weckman, last name W-E-C-K-E-N-M-A-N-N. Yes, thank you.
Can you give your qualifications for the board, please?
I've testified.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Weckman, if you can just go through, you can just go through the application describing the key elements and the variances required.
Sure, thank you. Thank you for your time this evening. This is a, a, a project that we've been working on.
I'm sorry, do you have any conversations? Can we have them outside, please? We still have another case.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, yes, this is a project that we've, we've been working on for the past two years. The owner of this property, he's, he occupies the property currently. And he's, you know, we've worked very hard here to present a project that is contextually appropriate and fits in nicely with the, with the neighborhood. We've, we've had multiple, this is another project that has been a very good collaboration with the local neighborhood association. We've met with them several times. We met with their development committee, along with some of the immediate neighbors, who provided us with very good feedback that we were able to incorporate into the project, which the version that I'm going to present to you tonight is very different from where, where we first started. I think it's a much, much better project because of the input that we got from the neighborhood and from, from planning staff. I'm sure there's things that they, they, we don't necessarily see eye to eye on here, but I, I think this was a very, very good collaboration. So, I'd just like to touch on a few of those things first, and then I'll get into some of the, the variances specifically. So, the first suggestion from, from the neighborhood group, which is related to the use variance, was that there was a very strong support for a commercial space along this section of, of Palisade Avenue. This stretch to the south does have some larger buildings, but there's, with, with some historic storefronts. But there's not very many commercial amenities. So the, what we originally had was a garage entrance here and a, a large lobby. And what we did was we, we kind of flipped the building. So we took the lounge and amenity spaces and moved them inward, and then created this really nice, large, commercial space in the front of the building to really engage with the neighborhood and to provide an amenity for the, for the neighborhood at large. One of the other items that we are providing is, for this application, there are two, two affordable units that are required. In conversations that we have with the neighborhood, there was a request that we up that to five units, which unfortunately was, was not feasible. But we are providing one additional affordable unit above what's required. So this project will have three, three affordable housing units.
Oh, okay.
Which I believe is, is one, one more than what's indicated on the, on the agenda. And then finally, you'll see this on one of the later slides. We did rework the roof amenity space per some of their feedback to minimize its impact and create buffers to the surrounding properties. With that, I would just like to pull up a quick, I'd like to enter this as, as an exhibit. This is a, an aerial view of the, of the property.
Just before we do that, I'm sorry, my procedural mistake. I failed to give the proof of service.
Yeah, let me just get counsel.
Sorry, you waiting for me for that? Sorry.
So it's the, it's the proof of publication. Okay, just want to be sure. That's correct. Okay, and just one other, if I, if I may. Both on the agenda and in the planner's report, this property is listed as Lot 2, but it is actually Lot 1. And you'll see from all our submissions, including our proof of notice. It is Lot 1.
51?
51. 51, not 52. That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Typically, we have a, a site plan, but it's, it's on the civil drawings. So I, I think that, but I think the aerial photograph is, is helpful to see some of the context. So, we are asking for, for the use variance, which I touched on previously. But we're also asking for a height and rear yard setback variance for the project. So, the, the building that we're proposing is four stories, which is consistent with the neighbor immediately adjacent to this property, to the south. One of the, one of the other unique features of this stretch of Palisade is that there are a variety of, of building heights. There's a variety of building types, from mixed-use buildings, larger multifamily buildings, one and two-family dwellings. So, on, on a block like this, where there's not necessarily a uniform height, a, a four-story building here is, is contextually appropriate. Additionally, all of the multifamily buildings in this stretch are either four stories or greater. So, the, the multifamily building that we're proposing is in keeping with the sort of commonly found situation on the block for multifamily building. The other factor is the proportions of the facade, which I'll touch on later in my presentation, but the three over one, the division of the residential floors and the commercial floors on a fifty-foot lot, it's much more appropriate to have a taller building as opposed to a shorter three-story building. Proportionally, it just, it works better, architecturally, it works better. So from that perspective too, not just from a context standpoint, but from an actual architectural perspective, the taller height is appropriate here. The rear yard setback, just to touch on that briefly, as you can see here, Palisade does not have a uniform rear yard. You don't have that donut configuration that you see elsewhere throughout the city. There are buildings that have increased rear yard setbacks. There are situations where, over here, you have a principal building, which is set all the way back to the rear property line. There are accessory buildings scattered throughout the block. So again, in this situation, you know, rear yard setback is appropriate. One of the other things I'd like to point out is it will be considerably shorter, the proposed building will be considerably shorter than the building immediately to the south. And then the final point I'd like to make is that the, currently, the site has a two-family building towards the front and then an accessory garage building towards the rear of the property. This garage is going to be removed as part of the project and dedicated as green space, open space for the project. So the, there's about, this garage is about six hundred and eighty square feet. And the proposed footprint of the new building that will encroach into the rear yard setback is only three hundred and thirty-five feet. So we're actually reducing the, even though it's a new building, the amount of square footage or building footprint that extends into the rear yard setback will actually be reduced by this building. Let's go back to the first page here. So I'll just, I'll now quickly walk you through the floor plans for the building. And I'll touch on some specific concerns that came up this week from the adjoining neighbor, because it's not shown on these drawings, but I do want to put it on the record. So currently, this, so Palisade Avenue is here to the right of the screen. North is towards the bottom of the screen. The neighbor to the north has a lot line window here that the surveyor missed. The owner wasn't aware that it was there and we missed it when we did our field investigation. So typically, in this situation, we would step the building back around that window. But in conversations with the neighbor, we have agreed to relocate that window to this wall and close up the opening. So that's something that the owner is willing to do. Couple other issues with this neighbor that we want to address, there's, by putting a building here up against this window well, it restricts the drainage. So we will be including a drain here within this courtyard, even though, again, it's not on our property. We're alleviating any kind of drainage issues here by including the yard drain. And then finally, there were some concerns about visibility when coming out of this driveway. So we've also agreed to put a strobe or notification device on the building to alert pedestrians that, you know, there's a car coming out of this garage. And then finally, there's a service mast here that will be relocated as well. So I just want to be clear that if there are any issues with the neighboring building, if there's anything that needs to be modified as a result of the construction of this building, the owner, the applicant is more than willing to work with the neighbors to address any concerns and if necessary, pay for any work to alleviate those issues. So with that, I'll just quickly go through the floor plans. Fronting Palisade, we have the main building entrance and lobby. And then we have the commercial space here towards the center of the plan. The amenity space, the lobby, is pushed back towards the center of the building. And then we have three side and rear-facing dwelling units on the first floor with access to the rear yard.
Can you just address the commercial space, what it's designed for? That is one of the questions that was raised.
Sure. Right now, it's, we're thinking a small retail shop, a coffee shop, something of that nature, a cafe. We don't have a tenant in place. I know in the staff report, there was concern about the potential for a dispensary here. It's not permitted and the owner has no interest in entertaining a dispensary tenant at this location. So it would be, you know, general retail tenant. Moving up the plan, floors two through four are generally the same. There are two rear-facing units, two front-facing units, the core of the building is in the center, and then we have three side-facing units. The difference between this floor and the upper floors is that we have a three-bedroom affordable unit, which will be provided in this corner here. Again, this is, floor plans are saying, we just have a slight tweak, this is a two-bedroom on the upper two floors. Moving on to the roof plan, the roof has a common amenity space towards the center of the roof. This was repositioned to be a little bit smaller and further back from the front facade. The idea was to try to minimize the visibility to the greatest extent possible and locate it towards the center of the roof as opposed to having it towards the front. We have a large green roof, some mechanical space, and then we have a common area roof deck towards the rear. Another feature is that we have a green roof around the perimeter and that was to provide a buffer to the neighbors so that you don't have the occupants of the roof deck, you know, right up against the back of the building or leaning over. So it provides a little bit more privacy to the adjoining neighbors. I touched on the front facade a little bit earlier in my presentation. Again, we have this three over one situation with the first floor of the building being largely glass with aluminum accents, so, you know, high visibility into the retail space. And the upper floors, we're using brick as the primary facade material. The overall design is fairly simple, a simple brick building with punched openings, variable punched openings. And then this here is the profile of the roof deck, but this is a flattened view of the building, this is setback substantially. This is the rear elevation, it's a similar design, large oversized windows. We do have balconies along the back of the building, you know, facing views of Manhattan. It is a little bit simpler as we're using fiber cement lap siding as the primary material for the back. And this design continues around the south elevation as well. Same general design. I will note that we are extending the, where the building is setback from the, there's a side yard setback on the south side of the building. We are carrying the brick around that corner to provide a cohesive view from the front of the building. This is, finally, this is the north elevation, again, we're right up against the property line, so it's very, very simple lap siding. This is the courtyard that I referenced previously. Another thing I want to point out with the neighbor is that there are attic vents that are on the building. I haven't seen them myself, so I can't provide any direct testimony on to how we're going to treat those. But I will put on the record now that if they are obstructed by the building, we will address that with the neighbor to his satisfaction. This is just our material board, I won't spend too much time here, answer any questions. And then we also have our shadow analysis, which again, is pretty straightforward. I will answer any questions that you may have. And then finally, I'll conclude with the rendering. So, thank you, that concludes my testimony.
Can I ask you, can you detail just quickly the variances required and the reasons for them?
Would you like to provide testimony on that? Okay. Carolyn, our planner, will testify further on the variances.
Okay. That's it for this?
Okay.
Okay, our next witness is our engineer.
Want me to pull up your drawing?
Mr. President, do you swear that you test immunity? This evening will be the truth, the whole truth, we will be the truth, so hope you got it.
I do. Brian Liebeskind, L I E B E S K I N D.
Thank you, thank you.
Can you briefly describe for the board your background qualifications?
Sure, I presented before this board previously, my license is in good standing. Yes. Thank you. So as Dr. Chukwue just went through, the existing site that currently is made up of the main residential dwelling as well as an accessory garage in the rear of the property. The existing site is nearly a hundred percent impervious and includes surface parking in both the front yard and the rear yard. As you can see from the application, for you, the proposed project would create a landscaped rear yard. The setback proposed is thirty point two feet from the rear property line with a small area for pavers and then the remainder to be seeded and landscape material. We will be replacing the streetscape along Palisade Avenue per the city standards with new concrete sidewalk, new curbing, street trees and lighting. The existing driveway and curb cut based on the site will be removed as there's no parking proposed as part of this application. And we are in the Palisade Preservation Overlay District. We have provided a plan in the SILSET as well as in the engine report that outlines the compliance with the setbacks in the PPOID requirements. I also want to touch on the stormwater for the project. The site is seventy-five hundred square feet and based on the disturbance thresholds per the Jersey Stormwater Control ordinance, we are classified as a minor development. We have provided the calculations for a drywall system in the rear of the property collected from the roof drains. We understand from the neighborhood, you know, concerns about flooding and can make improvements to that system and provide a more of a traditional detention basin under the building. As mentioned, the existing site, you know, nearly a hundred percent impervious, you know, by virtue of, you know, providing the landscape in the rear yard and, you know, we are providing reduction, but we will, you know, as part of the application and the submission with JCMUA, provide a detention system under the building in lieu of the drywells that are shown in the rear yard. There are no further questions, that would conclude my testimony.
Okay, our last witness is Carolyn Wurstel, as our planner. I believe in the first case, she was qualified as an expert, so we can dispense with that.
I acknowledge I remain under oath. Let me pull up the correct project. So we're here this evening for a couple of variances. The first one is a D-one use variance that is related to the commercial space, a D-five density variance, a D-six height variance, and then two bulk variances, one for the minimum rear yard setback and rooftop appurtenance height. Do you, so this is showing the zoning table? I mean, if we can get the engineering plans? Okay. So I think I'm going to start off with the D-one use variance, start at the top. So we are requesting a D-one use variance for the commercial space. And as was sort of testified, this was something that came as sort of an ask from the community as something that they would potentially like to see at a ground floor here. This is a larger site, it's fifty feet wide. Typically, in this area, you're going to see more twenty-five, you know, by a hundred, that's your more typical lot. This is fifty feet wide and so it really allows for an ample space for, not only to have a decent-sized residential lobby, but to have eight hundred square feet of commercial space. So we thought that this was an appropriate use down here to really activate that ground floor rather than having, you know, potentially additional residential or parking here. We thought that this would be a better use of this space that would be more appropriate for Palisades Avenue. And again, part of what makes, when we look at a D-one use variance, we're looking at what is something that will, again, promote the general welfare and is particularly suited to the site. So this site is located on Palisade Avenue, which is one of the sort of major, it's a bit of a commercial corridor within the heights. South of here, just south of Congress Street is an RC zone where residential commercial is permitted and encouraged. So this is very consistent with the development style that is up and down this corridor. Additionally, this is just like point two miles, it's, you know, with just a couple minutes from the Ninth Street, Congress Street station, the steps down to it. And so that really allows there to be a lot of foot traffic, you know, along this corridor, people coming back and forth trying to access the light rail station. So again, that's another reason that we think commercial use would be appropriate here. It's going to have the necessary foot traffic going past the site to support that type of use. And I think it really will promote the general welfare here. Again, one of, we could have parking here, but we think that this is a better use because it eliminates that curb cut, it creates the more pedestrian-friendly character that we think is appropriate. And it would also help, it would also remove fencing which currently extends into the sidewalk. So overall, I think that this results in a better pedestrian experience along Palisade Avenue. And again, I just think that this allows for that small-scale retail, which enlivens the streetscape and allows for that fifteen-minute city, allows for those small commercial uses which make these urban communities places that people want to live. They want to be able to walk down the street a couple blocks and get to a small store, a small cafe, something like. like that. So that's the type of use that people like to see in these communities. And it, it's particularly along Palisade Avenue where, where it's appropriate. Looking at the D5 density variance. So, irrelevant case law, when we look at a, a density variance, the standard here is whether the property can accommodate the proposed density. So this project is proposing 24 units. That's 139 units per acre in terms of density. And we believe that this site, again, is appropriate for that intensity. It is a larger site. You know, it's 50 feet wide. It is 7,500 square feet. So it's, it's not only is it wider, it's deeper. So you get a much larger site. And so you really can create a building that has a footprint, that creates that diversity of housing typologies. You can create, you know, studios, one, two, three bedrooms. We, we have this footprint that we can create that diversity of housing. And it's really consistent with other multifamily buildings who are in this neighborhood directly in the adjacent, I think, the 618 Palisades Avenue. That's eight units, 109 units per acre. There's 615 Palisade, which is a 16-unit building, 139 units per acre. There's some other 620 Palisades Avenue, which is 18 units, 75 units per acre. 650 Palisades, 34 units, 170 units per acre. So as you can see, it really fits within this context, within this, this block of, there are these, you know, larger lots that have these sort of multifamily buildings that have that 100, you know, 140 units as, as an average. So I do think that this site can accommodate this use. You know, we, we are providing conforming coverages. We're actually improving the coverage, the impervious coverage on this site as, as was testified. So I think we can accommodate that use. And again, this, this project is situated on Palisades Avenue, which is a corridor where denser mixed-use development is encouraged in the RC2 district, which is south of Congress Street. So this is sort of the continuation of the character of the corridor. And it is, you know, like I said, it's very close to that Ninth Street, Congress Street Station. So again, we're close to transit, which is where you tend to want to see your higher densities for transit-oriented development. So I think that, you know, all in that this is an appropriate site and it can accommodate that additional density. And then this is an IZO application. We are permitting the standard. The standard here would actually be 2.4. It's 10%. So 2.4 units. Typically, if you had 2.4, you provide two units and then you pay a fee in lieu to cover that 0.4. This application, we're providing the third unit. So we are actually sort of going above and beyond what the IZO requires and we're providing that additional unit. So there are three affordable units in this building. So that's, that's above, you know, what is the minimum required. And then looking at the height, that's the D6 variance. And again, looking, what, what are the, the special key, what are the special reasons? What's the criteria that we look for? And we look and say, is it going to promote a harmonious, consistent visual environment while not offending the purposes of the height restriction, which is namely light and air? This building is proposed at 43 feet, eight inches and four stories. That does exceed the, what is permitted in the zone. But I, I believe that this will create that consistent harmonious visual environment. It is consistent with the adjacent structures to the south of it. It's consistent with the other multifamily buildings that are interspersed throughout this block, throughout the corridor, where you are seeing those four-story buildings for multifamily housing. So again, I, those four properties I had mentioned before, 618 Palisade, 620 Palisade, 615, 615 and 650, all of those are four-story buildings. So again, when you're seeing that multifamily, you're seeing them in that four-story context.
Okay.
And I think the additional height really is going to have incremental impacts on light and air to the adjacent properties. It's really limited to early afternoon hours. Those morning shadows, shadows are primarily cast on the street. Late afternoon shadow impacts mostly encompassed within the existing building shadows cast by the other existing four-story buildings. So again, it, it will have an incremental impact on, on the shadows. When I, looking at the bulk variances, we're asking for a minimum rear yard setback. So this project is providing a 30-foot, a little over 30 feet of rear yard setback. And again, this is a much deeper lot than we typically see. So that's why 30 feet, even when we have 30 feet of rear yard setback, we're still asking for a variance because we, we're, that 30 feet, it's still only 20%. But there's a little quirk of this lot. The, there's the, the lot line, and then when you look at the property, there's a retaining wall that goes around sort of the edges. That retaining wall is actually on the property behind us. And so visually, it looks like there's another five feet of the rear yard, but that's not actually on the property. So the 20, the 30 feet that we're proposing, that's from our lot line. Visually, functionally, we're going to have 36 because we're going to be removing that existing garage, which is in the rear yard, and that does extend beyond our property line onto the adjacent property. That will be removed. All of the pavement back there will be removed. So overall, that space will become, you know, open space. It'll become part of, functionally, part of that yard. I don't see that there's, you know, light or air impacts that are a detriment to this. The building that's directly adjacent to us to the rear, they're at the bottom of that retaining wall. They're backed up to that retaining wall. So they're not really going to feel a lot of the impacts from our height because again, we're already, we're 36 feet back from where the wall is, which is what's already creating impacts for them. So they're really not going to see significant impacts from, from this variance. Looking at the maximum rooftop appurtenance height, that's the final one. And this just happens to relate to the fact that in the Jersey City Land Development Ordinance, when you have buildings that are under 45 feet in height, you're only permitted 10 feet of appurtenance on the roof. And essentially, it means you can get a stairwell up there, but you can't get elevators. But in order to make this roof accessible for ADA, we have to get an elevator up there. They're typically 14, 16 feet because you have mechanicals on top. So this is, this is a very standard height for an elevator bulkhead. And so that's what we're requesting. It does meet all the setback requirements, so it really won't have a visual impact from the street. I think that this project advances the purposes of the municipal land use law. You know, it's providing appropriate uses in, along this corridor, consistent with purpose A. I think it's going to provide the adequate light, air and open space, consistent with purpose C. You know, we are creating more open space than there exists today, and I think that's a really great benefit. It will promote an appropriate population density, consistent with purpose E. We are, again, like I said, you're creating that diversity of housing types. We are providing the three affordable housing units. It'll promote a desirable visual environment, consistent with purpose I. Again, we're, right now, you see a parking lot in a building, and then there's a parking lot behind it. This is going to be a new structure with ground floor commercial. You know, it's going to be creating and continuing that, that building wall along Palisade Avenue that exists from, from the south and continuing it. So I do think that this is an improvement. Plus, you get the new street tree and, and improvements to the sidewalks. I don't see this as a negative, will result in a substantial detriment to the general welfare. It's a, the multifamily dwelling is consistent with the residential character of the neighborhood. That proposed use, again, as I said, I, ground floor commercial use, I think, adds to the character of the corridor, the character of the neighborhood as, as a sort of mixed-use corridor that will provide benefits to the local community.
Okay.
And I don't see this as substantial impairment to the intent and purpose, the zone plan or the zoning ordinance. It's advancing the goals of the Jersey City Master Plan to provide unique, attractive, high-quality residential areas that serve an existing residence, attract new residents with a wide range of housing, housing and lifestyle choices. So I think it really meets the goals of that master plan. So I think overall, the variances can be granted and that they meet both the positive and the negative criteria. And that's my direct testimony in case any, unless any questions.
No, we'll leave that for the end. Thank you so much. And is there anybody in the public that would like to speak?
What?
Yeah, he only had, is, is that your, is that it?
That concludes.
Yeah, he said only three. Yeah. Okay. You have three minutes.
Thank you.
Paul Stylianou. My name is Paul Stylianou, S.T.Y.L.I.A.N.O.U. I reside in Hope Okun, but I own 628 Palisade Avenue.
And you swear that the testimony you will provide will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do, yeah. So I heard Will mention at the very beginning, the architect, Will Weckman, that they've been working on this project for two years. They've reached out to the community. They've been talking to people. I live next, I own the building next door, 628 Palisade. Nine days ago, when I received the certified letter, is the first I've heard of this. So in the nine days, I had to very quickly teach myself how to read blueprints and shadow studies and all this other stuff. As best as I can tell from their shadow studies, the only ti, my building will go from having sunlight all of the time to basically just having sunlight for an hour or so in the afternoon, starting at about 4 o'clock on. So my, my entire building, because they're going all the way to the front lot line and they're going three, four stories up, the front of my building is rendered sunlight less, if that's a word.
I'm sorry, is that that white building next to it?
Uh, yeah, can, yeah, it's the, it's the little white building right next.
Yeah, the white building.
Back up there?
Yeah.
Actually, it would help.
Oh, it's not up there. Well, I see it here. So it's the white building right next to it.
So, so basically, there it is. There we go. Okay. So yeah, I'm the immediate house next to the left.
Okay.
So the testimony that I heard from the planner was basically referencing everything south of that lot. Everything north of that lot, with the exception of one old apartment building that's way north, is all multifamily, three-story houses. It's not, I think they're twos and threes, but I, there's nothing that's taller than three stories north of my building except for that one apartment building that's been there forever and a day. So this is quite unique. It's, it's, we're taking a two-family house, turning it into a 24-unit building. We're taking away seven parking spaces, but we're adding 22 families and God knows how many cars. Right? It's already tight on parking up there as it is. Where are all these cars going to go?
Mm-hmm.
I, I can already anticipate the number of times I'm going to have to call to get cars towed out of my driveway because people are double parking, desperate, what have you. Same thing goes for the restaurant, café.
Thirty seconds.
That they're going to put into the base. People are going to be double parking all over the place. I, I mean, I, I understand. It looks pretty, especially compared to what's there right now. And I have to, I have to say that once I reached out to the owner and I managed to track down the architect through the plans that were online, they were very accommodating about, yes, we have to fix that lot line window that wasn't in the survey. Yes, we'll put in a drain in your window well. You know, they're going to do all that stuff. But I don't know that this is still the right thing for this neighborhood.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any other speaker?
Hi.
Do you swear that the testimony you will provide will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Your full name, please.
Bridget Fujioka.
This is my last. And your address?
631 Palisade Avenue.
Thank you.
Okay. Hi. Thanks for letting me speak to you guys tonight. I want to reiterate what my neighbor said here is that until last week, this is the first time we've ever heard of this project. We didn't get any notification. And there were several other neighbors that did want to attend this meeting, but because of the short notice and not receiving anything, they weren't able to. So first of all, like he said, anything north from that area, there's nothing taller than two to three stories. There's also no retail over there. It's only, it stays right to the corner. And it does affect the light, air and privacy of all the neighbors around us, from me across the street to next door. It blocks the light, but then you also have the idea of this roof coming up and people put roof lights on there, these floodlights that stay on all night. Also concerns about this business going in. Are they going to have lighted signs that are going to just flash into my window all day in addition to that strobe light for the parking that was suggested? How is that going to affect everyone that lives here? There's also, from my understanding, and I'm very limited in this, is there has to be a hardship, that the owner of the property has a hardship, and that's why they're asking for this variance. I don't see how there's any kind of hardship. It just seems to me like a poor business decision if you can't keep in line with the plans that are allowed here. Why are we keep approving and asking for variances? It happens time and time again. Communities speak out and we're not listened to. We're concerned about the stormwater management and flooding. Flooding has increased in the heights over the years. Many have attributed that to the increase in non-permeable surfaces. And let's see, what else? The height's too high. I also have concern about who's the owner, the affidavit ownership. There's a discrepancy there. Who actually owns this property? Seems a little, I don't know, suspicious. Let's see. There's no, the alert. You have this big property now. It's three times the size of, it's three times the units that are usually allowed. Who's maintaining the garbage? The retail space, is that garbage for all these units going to be on our sidewalks for, I don't know, how long?
Thirty seconds.
Okay. Yeah, I just really wish you guys would listen to the community, listen to the neighbors. This is not good for our neighborhood. Nothing north of that to Union City has anything of that size, no commercial space. And it really is impeding on our quality of life and the people who have invested their time and energy into their homes and their community and, so I got to say, but thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Hi.
Hi, good evening.
Do you swear that the testimony you will provide will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your full name.
Viviana Perez.
Yes, and your address was Perez?
637 and a half Palisade Avenue.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to reiterate what my neighbors have said. I just received this notification and you can, you can, you can see here, the date is 7/25, and I picked it up from the post office last Saturday. And that's when I just came to know about this project. Didn't know a word about all, all of this project that they have been working so hard for the past two years.
Okay.
Okay? I came to the heights 20 years ago, and I, I came with the understanding that I was buying an old house in an old city and that I would have a tough time finding parking because I had no garage. And I was okay with that. And I have lived okay in my house for the past 20 years because I had incredible sun, sunrises and beautiful sunsets. And I have plenty of birds in my backyard. But now what I'm experiencing 20 years later is that I'm being surrounded by these giant boxes. So I have a giant white box in the bar, in the back, that blocked my entire view of the sunsets, of the planes coming into Newark Airport. The birds are not coming anymore, not in, in the amount that, that they were coming when, when I first moved. So the lady planner was talking about the character of the neighborhood. And I can tell you that the character of the neighborhood is nothing like the behemoth that they're showing on the screen. The, the project is simply too large, too large, too max, too much for our community and for our neighborhood. It's, it's going to put a strain on an already overburdened infr-... We don't have, we don't have the infrastructure to support and yet another project of this size because we already have enough with the 620, with the 642, with the 617, with the 618, and not to mention all the ones that I, that I had, they had been built in our back. And then what is happening is that you guys are not listening to the community, simple as that. Please do not allow this to become another 128 Glenwood. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Hi. Please, Mr. Man, do you swear that the testimony you will provide this evening will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you guys? Yes, I do. Uh, Bhavan Patel, B-H-A-V-I-N Patel. Uh, 211 Webster Avenue. So, good evening. I'm gonna strike a different tone. So my name is Bhavan. Um, I'm a resident of the Heights, living at Webster and Bowers. I've been back for five years in Jersey City, having been born here once, but moved away. Um, so I'm here today to speak in support of the proposed project, uh, 626, um, and hope that the board approves applicant's variance request. So many current Height residents and many people who would hope to be our neighbors in the Heights can attest to the, can attest to, attest to the brutal conditions of our residential rental and ownership market. You know, we experience acute housing price pressures due to intense demand, but it's rather than supply. Bringing these 24 new units, three of which are income restricted above and beyond what's required in the ISO, bringing them to market is vitally important to bringing, making, bringing down housing costs across the neighborhood and the city. Public policies, public policy experts have consistently found that building more housing helps improve affordability across a broader neighborhood. Even if these feelings don't feel intuitive to my neighbors, it's nonetheless true. If for no simple other reason that we all compete for housing with one another and with newcomers. And so to build more housing is to make affordable housing, make, make all housing affordable for everyone.
Okay.
I regularly run up the stretch of Palisade Avenue where the proposed project would be located. A four-story, 24-unit building would be completely in character with existing mixed-use and moderate-density elements of this, of this, of this neighborhood. You know, there's, there's a, there's a 16 building, or 18, sorry, pardon me. There's an 18-unit building directly adjacent to the building, uh, to the proposed project, 16-unit building across from it, and a 34-unit building, uh, just up the street at Palisade North, all of which are at least four stories tall and have higher density, um, higher unit densities than is allowed under the current zoning. Additionally, the inclusion of, uh, ground-for retail will add more eyes in the street, enhancing uh, community safety and vibrancy. To make an analogy, your iPhone has 1,000 gigabytes of data storage and fits easily into your pocket. This proposed project is an easy fit for the neighborhood and our housing needs. I think the real question is not whether this, I think this real, I think the real question is not whether this project should receive a variance from the R1 zoning, as I suggested it would, but rather is the R1 zoning appropriate for this parcel? Given that it's only a minute walk from many major bus stops and three-minute walk from the light rail. I think the Heights deserve smart growth, appropriate densities, greater vibrancy, and more housing in congruence with the city's master plan vision, and this project delivers that. So I hope tonight the, the board approves the zoning variances as sought by the applicant for the project.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. Do you swear that the testimony you will provide this evening will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you guys? State your full name, please. Juan Martinez. My address is 623 Palisade Avenue. Jersey City. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My English not so good, but I wanna say one thing. I live right across the building that they're gonna build. As, uh, I lived there 46 years. And now I, I know that they're gonna do that building, and you got, uh, a law, a new law, that the zone permit is only three-story height. They pay a lot of people, professional, to, to study what's going on with the city, what is more convenient for the city. Uh, after that, they make a rule. The rule that they change whatever was, uh, put like 30 something years ago. Now that they changed for three-story building, no parking. It's okay, no parking. But now this person that they wanna build, uh, another building, they wanna put four-story, which is, what I understand, is not gonna be four stories, like four and a half. If you, you can show the plan, the, the, not, not this, uh, picture. The plan is show like, uh, another half of, uh, floor on, on top. So it's not gonna be four floor. It's gonna be four and a half. And they said, okay, no parking, it's okay. The, it's good for us, the new, uh, zone, it's good for us, no parking. So they take advantage of that, but now they said, okay, we take this one, but we want four floor, not three floor. So I live right across. It's not gonna be no sun for me. It's not gonna be no, enough air for me. I gotta share all the, uh, the sewage line with all these people because everybody gotta go to the, the bathroom. Now, we're not gonna have maybe enough supplies to do all, all our necessities. Why? Because they wanna make profit more, uh, unique? I don't think it's fair.
Okay.
I don't think it's fair. Plus, right now, I got problem with the parking. I got a parking space all the time, I gotta be fighting because they park over there and they got no excuse. They said, no, no, I got, I got no, nowhere to park, nowhere to park. What's gonna happen with the, the other 24, uh, apartment? They don't have 24 cars. They're gonna have maybe 40 cars. Because one family, they don't have only one car. Sometimes they got two cars.
Yeah.
Maybe some of them, they don't need car to go to work.
That's time. Your time is up.
You have time. Ya se acabó.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can I ask you a question just before my three minutes start? So I'm representing the Riverview Neighbor Association, and, uh, what I was asked last time is to not have every, you know, 20 different members of our group, uh, speak in that I represent. Could I get five minutes, just in light of that?
Okay, yes.
Is that okay?
Yes, go ahead.
I, I appreciate that, because I, I have a bit to get through and I, and rather than having 10 people speak.
That's fine, that's fine. Just go ahead.
Has anybody reached out to your?
Yeah, 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 we, we have, but obviously the, they didn't reach out to these neighbors, which is a problem, of course.
You're gonna be the last one?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so I'll swear. Sorry.
I understand, but he's gonna be the last one.
Yes, I do. Kern Weisman, W-K-E-R-N, last name is W-E-I-S-S-M-A-N, and I'm at 576 Palisade Avenue.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great, I appreciate that accommodation.
Okay.
So, uh, I am Kern Weisman, representing the Riverview Neighbor Association. I'm also the chair of the development committee. Um, so I, I'm gonna read a prepared statement and then I'll get to a couple of other items. Uh, good evening, members of the zoning board. Um, I appreciate all your, you know, sometimes thankless, uh, job you're doing here. Um, speaking, uh, on behalf of, of the, the association in our current position, I certainly don't speak on behalf of the neighbors, um, but I, I support and understand what their objections are. So our objection is very straightforward. Uh, the, the project is just too big, and granting this variance will undermine our zoning, zoning ordinance and master plan. So first, uh, and this is important because we are a city of laws, right? We should try to adhere to them. So first, the proposed density is extraordinary. It's 142 units per acre, as their, uh, planner testified, more than three times the R1 zone maximum, which says, sits. This isn't a minor adjustment, it's actually new to ignore the rules entirely for this zone. That's just reality. Um, you're really not in, in law, uh, allowed to reference other variance approvals like the one next to it. You're actually not supposed to do that. You're supposed to, each individual project is supposed to be looked at in its own merits, not in reference to what another variance that may have been granted, because those conditions, site conditions may have been different, right?
Okay.
Um, so second, the applicant wants an additional floor while providing really nothing in return. They keep talking about the, you know, this, 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 uh, variance for a commercial unit, but really, they're asking for a floor and, and, and really not providing a significant community benefit. What they're asking for is really a windfall for them, additional units, additional height. Um, so in our discussions with the applicant, which we did have, to answer your question, we identified two alternatives that RNA, you know, would support. Again, not speaking for the neighbors, but two that we would support. So one was simply building the height to three stories, that's, that's allowed, and then using the affordable housing overlay, which thanks to Tanya and Matt and others in planning department, put, put in place. They put that in place very specifically for lots like this. The affordable housing overlay was meant for this. This is exactly, so it increased that options for developing large lots within the R1. That's why it's there. So we said, okay, you can do that, or if you're gonna proceed with a fourth floor, that's gonna have quite an impact, as you heard here. There's gotta be really something significant. The only thing we could think of that would be, that's significant, would be going above and beyond the affordability and doing like 20% affordability. That's where that, you know, the five came from. It, they simply refused to do that. So we said, okay, then, then just build as if right. You can do it. There's no hardship on this lot. So the, their request is particularly frustrating because we just completed a new master plan process, updated the zoning map, our commu, our community and our group participated in that process, no one at city planning in this entire process or the community, uh, said that this block should be triple the normal density with four-story buildings. That was, never came up, and this was just on last year. I was intimately spent, I mean, do- dozens of hours on this. The community and the city planning agreed on density and height limits for good reasons that, those reasons haven't changed. The zoning rules provide predictability for residents such as these and ensure thoughtful development. We're asking you to just uphold those rules. That's all we're asking here. Granting this variance would undermines the affordable housing overlay, which is really important. Uh, the HO offers relief from density limits, but also, but it all, all requires other bulk regulations be respected, and that's the key. It was designed precisely to discourage a proposal like this one. We ask that you simply uphold the intent of the law. That's all we're asking you to do. Uh, we urge you to deny the request of variances. We need, we see no hardship. Developer has a great deal of freedom under the R1, the HO regulations to build an economically viable three-story building with no density regulated. They can put as many as they can fit via building code.
One minute.
Yep. There are no public benefits from the addition of the fourth floor. Granting variance here will substantially impair the intent and purpose of municipal zoning ordinance and master plan. If you approve the variance that triples the allowed density in R1 just because developer asked for it and prov, and provides the rewards of the HO without enforcing its restrictions, what's to stop the next developer from doing the same thing at the, at the lot next door? The last thing I wanna cover, and this is important, the plan you have, the engineering report is inaccurate. This is a major site development. I, I wanna be clear, I know I spoke, uh, planning about this, that it requires, the, the stormwater ordinance says if you replace, if you replace 5,000 square feet of regulated impervious surface, that you must, this must be considered a major development, not a minor. And, and just to be clear on that, just to, to read this through, this, uh, the definition of impervious surface, and again, I'm, I'm, that was from.
Your five minutes over.
Yeah, yeah, let me just finish this one.
Wait a minute, we're, we're letting him finish.
Okay, yeah. And, and I just wanna make this, so the replacement of over 5,000 square feet of regulated impervious surface, that's from your Jersey City stormwater ordinance that you guys need to enforce, right? The, the, one of the definitions of regulated impervious surface is the total area of impervious surface proposed to be collected by an existing stormwater conveyance system, existing, right? So you're basically saying, I'm gonna now, I'm sorry, it says newly collected by an existing storm, meaning that if you're building a new project, you're destroying and demoing an existing building, you're putting up a new building, and you're now, uh, disturbing over 5,000 square feet of impervious surface. That is the condition of which makes it be a major. So unfortunately, your current plans that you have in front of you that you've been asked to vote it on are, that engineering report is inaccurate.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
I, I have a question for him. Did the RNA ask for the use variance to be included in this application?
No, it, some neighbors suggested it as an alternative to the original proposal that was to drive into a driveway and then back out upon Palisade for like.
Yes or no? Yes, they did?
No.
RNA did?
No, some neighbors suggested that.
Some neighbors did?
Some neighbors that were on the initial call with, with the group basically said that as an alternative to the original plan, which was to have a driveway, they suggested that, uh, an alternate was to use.
Okay, 'cause it was just testified, I just wanted to make, I just wanted to understand.
It, it was suggested by neighbors to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Should we leave this 10 o'clock?
And, and that was a meeting that was, uh, organized by the development.
Okay.
It was RNA Development Committee. Uh, I believe Kern was there along with some of the neighbors, yeah, so.
Okay, all right. Did, I, I, did you conclude all your speakers? Is that it?
That, that concludes all our speakers.
You have another speaker?
I'm, I'm just a public, member of the public.
Okay.
Hi, my name.
Do you swear that the testimony you will provide will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you guys?
I do. Uh, Dario, D-A-R-I-O, Gutierrez, G-U-T-I-E-R-E-Z.
Your address, please.
36 Magnolia Avenue. Uh, yeah. Hi, so, um, I just wanted to, um, I wasn't gonna speak today. Um, I was just here, um, you know, uh, sitting with a friend, uh, watching, but I, I guess I just wanted to address like a specific point that was made, which is, you know, they could use the HO. Um, that would, that's true, but, um, you know, under the HO and the three stories, I don't think that they would include, uh, three affordable units like they're including now. Um, you know, I, I guess I.
It's 10%.
It's 10%, but now they're doing 12 and a half percent. And there's units on the first floor, too, and you would remove that first floor so there would be a lower unit count. There wouldn't be the, um, the bulk, um, that, that this building has, right? So there would be a lot less living area, 10% of a lot less living area compared to 12 and a half percent of, you know, what's more living area in this plan. Um, I was wondering, you know, a question for the, the, the team, um, did, did you guys study a three-floor, uh, HO compliant development for this, or did you?
I'll, I'll ask. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Um, I don't know if I'm allowed to ask them, but did you study an HO compliant development for this site?
We did look at it, yes, we looked at it, we tried in different configurations.
Yeah, would any of them have had three affordable units?
Can you please, can you please answer here?
Um, you know, would you, would you have been able to put like, you know, enough, enough units in that three-story envelope to, to reach, you know, the three units that you're doing here?
I mean, we, we did look at a number of alternatives here. You know, I hate to speculate on alternatives since, you know, that, that's not the application that we're, we're presenting tonight. Um, I mean, it goes without saying that if you reduce the number of units, then you reduce the number of affordable units. So, uh, just without any sort of official review or analysis, if we did theoretically reduce the building height, we would end up with one or, uh, possibly zero units, depending on how, how we reconfigured the unit mix, so.
So, so, you know, so that's all I wanted to say, you know, um, the, the gentleman over here was talking about five units, you know, affordable, and he's saying three is not enough, but you know, now you're gonna push a plan that would have zero or one affordable units. You know, I think, I think that, uh, you know, if, if we want affordable housing in Jersey City, I think this is a good plan. That's all I wanted to say, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So, um, we are.
That's it for the public?
Is that it for the public? Okay. All right, so we're gonna try to finish this case right now. Okay. So, yeah, do we have any comments from the, the commissioners?
Yeah, I do.
Me too.
have zero or one affordable units. You know, I think, I think that, you know, if we want affordable housing in Jersey City, I think this is a good plan. That's all I wanted to say, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we are-
That's it for the public?
Is that it for the public? Okay. All right, so we're going to try to finish this case right now. Okay, so, yeah, do we have any comments from the commissioners?
Yeah, I do.
Me, too.
Okay, so, so I have two questions and a comment. My first comment is, I think this should go back and the immediate neighbors should be heard and informed on the project because it seems like the immediate neighbors on Palisades had no clue up until the 25th of July. The first question is, do you have a retention system plans that we can look at tonight? And the third question, I don't know who these questions would be directed to. And how deep are the ledges on the windows? Because it seemed like it's going to be a gathering place for the pigeons.
Do we, let us finish. Any other, are you going to answer the question? Okay, go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a couple inches. It's, you know, fairly minimal projection. We do this kind of detail all the time. I'll let Brian comment on the, it's not a detention system, but I'll have him offer more insight. And, you know, I agree, it's unfortunate when we have, you know, neighbors who are, you know, blindsided by these applications, but, you know, it was noticed properly. We did meet with RNA, the development group from RNA several times, and the owner is here almost every day. He has an owner-occupied unit on the top floor, and he's had conversations with, with people. And I don't know specifically who, but he did inform me that he's had conversations with neighbors. So he's, like I said, he's there every day, so.
Okay, my question would be, I see this building and it seems like it's- You have to wait. I see this building and I think it's protruding too far out where it is infringing on the other building, that building right next to it. I didn't, I really don't see the purpose of that. I think it can be moved back a little back so it can be aligned with the other building so like that it won't be, see, on that white building. I mean, it doesn't have to protrude so much that it will infringe on this other building. I think it, and in addition to that, there doesn't seem to be any space between these buildings. I don't know, I mean, from what I'm, I'm only going by what I'm seeing because I don't know, but from what I can see is there doesn't seem to be much buildings, any kind of space in between these buildings, and there's no, I'm really not, not happy with that. I just don't see that design as something that I would, I would approve.
Sure, well, I will say that we're not requesting any kind of setback variance for the front yard or for the side yards. You know, the neighbor to the, to the north is built to the lot line, so we are permitted to also build to the lot line. So the correct, there is no space between the buildings to the north. We do have a setback on the south because that building is setback. So the yard setbacks for the side yards are conforming. And again, you know, the, we are matching the, for the front yard, yes, it does project beyond the, you know, the neighbor next door. I agree that that's a legitimate, it's a legitimate concern. There is a transition that happens on this block. You know, you do have a series of detached or semi-detached buildings that are, that do have a front yard setback, but then on the southern side of the block, you do have a zero front yard all the way to the, to the corner. So this is continuing that, that street scape, and there's always going to be a transition at some point, and right now it happens at this property. And what we're proposing is that it's, it's on the opposite corner.
But even from the bottom, I mean, you can see even the protruding from the stores. I mean, there, there's like, like a, sort of like a roof over the stores. I mean, you can even push it back and kind of get it some kind of, I don't know, some, there has to be something that can be done to go back and kind of have it in line with the stores. I mean, if you're going to push back the store, the stores are pushed back. I mean, you don't have to have that, that roof or whatever it is that, you know, coming out.
Yeah, we do have a canopy, and I think we would be amenable to removing that as a condition if it's, if it's considered objectionable.
Yeah, I was in that, like, screen is out, but, I was gonna say, is there a way to design that corner, redesign the corner of that building closest to the house next door?
Yeah.
Like even square it off proportionally so it's fully set back? Also, the driveway, it's blindsided when you're trying to pull out of that driveway. You can, I mean, someone could be walking and riding a bike and it's blindside, the driveway. So it's a little concerning there. I mean, are you willing to go back and figure this out a little bit, or?
They would have, yeah.
Yeah, I mean-
I mean, it, it looks nice, I like the restaurant stuff. I mean, it always is good to have Jersey City grow in that respect, but it's like, I don't know, there are some issues there.
Sure, I understand.
If you wanted to keep it a four-story, like, you got to try and figure out how you can maneuver it. And then the other thought was three stories with the fourth story being set back a little further, like, like even three and three-fourths or something like that? I mean, just thoughts, I'm not saying you have to go do that, but just to rethink some of these things because they're kind of noticeable. And they understand the street, the building next to it, their street, their street line is equal to yours, but there's no house next door. The house is next door to yours, unfortunately.
Yeah, they're not infringing on another property.
That's the, yeah, that's, it is what it is.
Yeah, I mean, we did have a conversation about potentially recessing this corner. You know, it becomes difficult at a corner situation to recess the building on the first floor substantially.
Or all the way off, all the way up a little bit on one side, being able to reconfigure. I don't know the answer, you're the architect on that, but just an idea, if you want to go mess around with it a little bit. Maybe there's something to do in the back that changes it and you could trade off the front. I mean, listen, everyone has to, the community, everybody else has to talk and figure things out. Some things are just the way they are, like it's, the zoning is the zoning, and this is this, and that is that. But when we're trying to change some things and, you know, at least make an effort, not that you didn't, but I'm just saying, there are some people that didn't get the notice and I don't, I didn't see the mailing date or the postage date on it. So, I mean, one person brought it up here, so I'm assuming the date might have been, was the mailing date? All right, okay. Okay, so I don't know the answer to that, but.
Yeah, that, that's the required timeline, that's within, yeah, it's more than 10 days. That's what they're required by law. No, it was postmarked 2050, so. Correct. It just needs to be postmarked 10 days prior.
Yes, postmark 10 days.
Yeah, but still, I think they should have a little more notice, and I think they should-
Yeah, I, I all apologize here because we rely heavily on neighborhood associations. We tell applicants continually to reach out to them. You know, I don't know what the membership is of the RNA. I don't know if folks on the street have been part of it at times or not, or choose to participate or not. You know, we do rely heavily on that. There is, to require them to do a community meeting outside of, outside of neighborhood associations is quite a big uphill task for them to find a forum for that, to do that. So they reasonably rely on neighborhood associations for that. So I apologize if that is not, that's sufficient, that is typically sufficient throughout the city. You know, and, and they're, they've reviewed tons of applications, they're very knowledgeable, these community members throughout the city, and often give great insights, and I think they did probably here. I don't want to step ahead my full testimony, but I'd like to share that with the commissioners.
And I was gonna, I mean, agree with you on that. I mean, some people just don't get the mail on the same time as everybody else, and we can't, we can't go by that all the time. And you're right, the neighbor, you know, community groups come a lot of times and speak about things, and they know or should know what's going on, when it's happening and so on. Certainly, you can't pick and choose when you want to say I do know something and don't know something, but understood. And my issue isn't even with that, let's just go back to the project itself. I'm just talking about some of those issues, that's all. I'm not even worried about the mailings at this point or anything like that as the basis for my decisions or anything.
Sure, I mean, you know, typically when there's redesign requests that, that we get, I mean, we could handle it either, we could come back with further revisions to the building, or we could handle it with staff. I don't know if there's, it's hard for me to say because-
Yeah, I would say, and having sat through the Glenwood Avenue project, you know, you do have a lot of different views from neighbors, and from what I heard from the neighbors objecting, I don't know how, except maybe with the corner issue with the shadows, how we can satisfy the neighbors. So I don't want to get into a situation where we're back and forth with it, but if it can be handled administratively, that would be our preference.
I think it's better that they table this because and come back. Would you like to table this and come back to us with the proposed changes?
Sure, but I'm more than happy to do that.
Do you want to? I don't know many.
What are we proposing to change?
Well, that's, that's what we would have to clarify, so.
The corner, we push it back, there's just a couple of things. There's additional comments from the public that they want, they want it to be informed, they want input.
I haven't even given my testimony. We're not going to base-
Okay, if you want.
So, I mean, I think that if we're going to talk about adding things to the list, we should understand if there's even accuracy in some of the public comment that came through regarding the stormwater ordinance. But if we want to talk about the scale and bulk of the building, I think that that, I hear what the commissioners are saying, and it sounds like we should couch some of the conversation on redesign there for now at this moment. And if we need to revisit stormwater, we should do so at a later date.
So I just want to be very specific with what, what we are going to revise and come back with. So please correct me if I'm, I'm wrong here. So we'll look at the corner and address some sort of better or more appropriate transition at the corner of the building as it butts the neighbor. I think one thing, if it's, if it's preferable, we could also remove the awning if the board feels strongly about the awning. I'll look at the, okay, so we'll look at the corner, the awning, and then I think another thing we could, we could do if it's agreeable is look at recessing just the first, the first floor of the building so that at street level, you have a more of a better transition around the corner. And as you move down the block, if that's-
What about the fourth story?
Excuse me, you're not on the record right now.
I just feel that maybe that whole side or that, those windows on the side, you can probably eliminate all those, if you eliminate those windows, it would be good, and then push it back. I mean, this is just a drawing, I mean, you can, you can do, make the changes.
Eliminate the side of the windows on which-
On, on next to the, next to the White House.
She's talking about the north.
The north side. Do you have those windows?
These windows here?
Yeah. Do you need that? I mean, I don't know, maybe you can just push it.
I mean, I think what we would do is look holistically at the facade and what a transition at that corner would look like. So it may impact the windows, it may not, it's, I can't tell until we look at it and study it further. If there's anything.
Benny, what do you suggest, table this?
Well, I guess it has to be tabled, but Madam, you know what we're doing here?
My understanding is that we're going to address the corner by potentially pulling back that corner all the way up and recessing the whole ground floor, so can a levers, the floors above will can a lever, and the awning will be probably flush with the floors above. So instead of a canopy coming out from the whole plane of the building, it will just be that recess, and so there will be some cover to the elements by that can lever, the building above. So that sounds like, that sounds like, I mean, hearing the majority of it. I'm not sure if there's any, any other items, but I think I understand.
Good, thank you.
You understand one?
Absolutely, thank you. And they're good comments, they're valid comments, so we're happy to entertain them and come back with some alternatives.
Yeah, all right.
How do we get this gentleman to notice these people who are around the vicinity?
Okay.
Yeah.
So they get a little bit more notice.
You already had your chance.
I can, I can say that they, they can contact me at the office and I could, I could create a list, or if there's a point person for the community or the, the block, I could connect them with, with the applicant.
Okay, great, thank you.
And if you want to come up with me after the meeting, I can, I can try to facilitate that.
Okay, thank you.
Sound good?
Yeah.
Proceedurally, we'll table it?
Let's table it.
Require us to, but will we be carried to a next meeting, or we'll have to resubmit and renotice?
It'll have to be October 9th.
Eric, you can, yeah, you can speak with Eric and Matt.
We'll have to table it till, till October 9th.
Okay.
It's the, yeah, it's the most suitable date.
Okay, so we can table it till October 9th without notice?
To a date certain, because it's October 9th, you don't have to renotice.
Okay, thank you.
And these people here can, are on notice of that.
Yeah.
October 9th.
October 9th.
October 9th, we'll carry this, too.
Yeah, you should go back and inform the public, the, your neighbors, let them be more informed so like that when they come in, they are at least a little bit in line with what you want to present. Okay?
We will, yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay.
Okay, so, Chuck?
Yeah, our next case would be, which we point out of the norm, but our next case would be Z 024-0078, and this is 1727-1733. Mr. Harrington, who promises to be fast?
We will be as efficient as we possibly can. I appreciate it. Okay. So for the record, Charles Harrington of Connell Foley, on behalf of the applicant, I do have the public notices to give to council.
We'll have those marked, Iris. Let's go that way first.
Iris, thank you for staying, too.
Will, one second.
Are these people also-
So, no, you can give them to Eric.
So Iris, so the record is clear, you've just marked the notices for this case as A1. That's an affidavit, a proof of service, and a notice of publication.
Thank you for staying.
So we've accepted them for the record, so.
She can, she can go.
She leaving, or she's?
She's coming right back.
Okay, so why don't we hold on a minute, she's coming right back.
Yeah, she just needs a little break.
I do. It's Richard Garber, G-A-R-B-E-R.
So, just for the record, maybe I'll just skip my kind of summary and jump right into Richard because he's going to, you know, tell the story.
Okay. Go ahead, Richard.
And my license is still current, my license was just renewed, and everything is in place. So thank you all, it's nice to see you again, I will do this very quickly.
Okay.
We are here to talk about a project, Eric, can you put us up?
Do we need to mark your slides?
Oh, yeah, this should be marked, yes. This is four parcels being consolidated, 1727 JFK, which is a corner, a prominent corner lot on the Boulevard, and then two lots, 1731 and 1733, which are on Danforth. Now, the interesting thing and the reason why we're before this board is it's split-zoned. The Danforth sites are R1, the Boulevard site is RC2, and normally what would happen is the, the lots that have the larger square footage would govern in terms of the zoning to follow. It turns out here that the R1 lots, when combined, are 39 square feet larger than the RC2 lot. And it was close enough, this is a prominent corner, that in speaking with both the councilwoman and the planning department, we were, it was suggested to us that we could move forward with RC2 standards, understanding we'd be before your board and there would be more variances because the R1 is technically governing. Now, this is the building, I will come back to this, we'll talk a lot about that, but just to kind of give you a sense of the site, you can see here, it's a kind of wedge-shaped corner lot right at the corner of JFK and Danforth, and then there are two adjacent lots next to it. And as Mr. Harrington said, we've been meeting with, during, during the evening, meeting with the owner, who was not present at any of the community meetings we had, but she had some concerns and hopefully we've worked them out. We'll talk about that as well. You can see here why we're asking for RC2. This is, the entire Boulevard in 2020 was rezoned to that RC2. RC2 is, it replaced the NC zoning, so it's ground floor retail with multifamily above, little bit higher density, and that's the building you want on the corner of the Boulevard, 100%. It's appropriate, and just because the lots are being consolidated, it, as I said, it's, we're before your board. Some photos, including a Google aerial photo and then photos that we've taken that show the existing, it's kind of like a mini mall type thing, there's a florist there, that florist will be vacating to make room for the building that we are proposing here.
I live there.
Now, I'm going to read the design key points into the record prior to showing you the zoning tabulation, because I want everyone to understand these key points- the zoning tabulation, because I want everyone to understand these key points before we get to the variances, because there are variances because of the R1 RC2. Our total lot area is 11,525 square feet, our total proposed building is just under 60,000 square feet, excuse me, just under 53,000 square feet, 52,928 square feet. This is primarily a residential mixed-use building with parking garage and retail. Lots 18 and 19, which are the Danforth lots, are in the R1, they total 5782 square feet, and Lot 20 is 1727 JFK on the Boulevard, that totals 5743 square feet. Again, if you subtract those, we're talking about a 39 square foot difference between R1 and RC2, which we thought made the RC2 appropriate. Building height per RC2 is five stories, 59 feet. We had proposed 56 residential units, and speaking with the neighbor, we are willing to drop down to 54, so we'd lose two units, and I'll show you how we lose two, they would be two one-bedroom units that are lost. So with that and updating these tallies in real time, 16 studios, 26 one-bedrooms, four one-bedrooms with den, four two-bedrooms, and four three-bedrooms. We will still have eight affordable units in this project, and those units are one studio, four two-bedrooms, three three-bedrooms. Now, when you do the math because of the decrease in units, we get a tally, we had a tally of 8.4, meaning that .4 overage would have to be paid to the Affordable Housing Kiddy. Now, ultimately, we're down to 8.1, so we'll still be paying that .1% more, 10th of a point more, excuse me, but there will still be eight affordable units. As with many of our buildings, most of our buildings in elevators proposed providing wheelchair accessibility, the first floor, which you'll see in a second, is made up of the residential lobby, bike storage, mailboxes, trash room, parking garage, and three retail spaces. The total retail, which is all on the Boulevard, very nice, is 2,591 square feet, 2,591 square feet. We're showing that subdivided into three retail spaces that might get changed based on market conditions to one or two spaces as well, and we have that flexibility. Bike storage is provided for 28 parking spaces, and there is a common roof deck at 4,000 square feet as well. The variances, so there are variances, and the variances are because we're basing this on the R1, right? And so I'll just read through the yeses. We have a conditional use, which is the mixed-use multifamily with retail at grade, and that's again per the RC2. We have a density variance because we are using RC2-ish standards. We're proposing, again, the 54 units that I mentioned, I don't know the units per acre, it's gone down a little bit since we decreased. The rear yard setback will also change, and I'll show you that, we are actually going to be compliant now, Eric, and we'll talk about that. The maximum building height stays at five stories and 59 feet, and our coverage stays at the 91.3%. We are proposing 18 parking spaces, including six compact spaces. Now, what's interesting about that is we're noticing for this, the 18 spaces are what would be required, but we are noticing because we have more compact spaces than would be permitted. And to be clear, the minimum size of a standard space, 8.5 times by 18 feet, the compact spaces are eight feet wide, right? So we're, so six of those spaces go down in width from eight feet, six inches to eight feet, still fine for compact cars and things like that, we do that all the time, that won't be a problem. And then finally, we're noticing for residential and retail signage, because we could have as many as three retail spaces on the Boulevard as well. In terms of the site plan, this is the ground floor, you can see that we have the blue triangle shows the driveway, so that the curb cut is on Danforth, and then the residential lobby is east of that, also on Danforth. And then you can see we have three doors on the Boulevard, and those are for the retail spaces. In addition, you can see here called out the 28 bike spaces, you can see the parking garage with the 18 spaces, you can see we have storage and trash room, we're anticipating a transformer vault, that transformer vault is per PSE&amp;G spec, which is, I believe, 25 feet by 18 feet, whatever that spec is, that's what we're showing. And Eric asked for this diagram, this is the rear setback diagram, this has been decreased now, and I'm going to show you why when we get into the plans, we're basically cutting two of the units down on the upper floors. And so while this does still exist at grade and on floors two and three, it is decreased to be compliant on the upper floors, and I'll show you that, and obviously, should this be approved in compliance review, we'll have all of this taken care of. Briefly, we have a site lighting plan, you can see the fixtures, we have outdoor sconces and then the outdoor downlights that are coated in blue and green. Bike plan and trash removal plan, you can see here, I won't go into those too much. There is a trash compactor in the building, by the way, and that will be dedicated. We do have a cellar floor plan, and that is only one stair, no elevator, and that's just for building infrastructure, plumbing room, mechanical room, electrical room, we're sinking that down to try to give more space to the retail, the parking, and the residential lobby, which we thought was important, the owner was okay with that. This is our first floor plan. Briefly, you can see the 2,500 square feet of retail divided into three spaces in green on the Boulevard, you also see the transformer vault in the lower left, you see our circulation system coated in orange, two stairs and an elevator, the bike storage is in the rear in blue, and then that residential lobby that I mentioned is shown on the upper right-hand corner. We are acknowledging a three-foot side yard setback per the R1, and you can see that clearly delineated on the Danforth side. Our second floor plan, I will show you, and the floor plans had previously stacked, there will be one modest change to that, but you can basically see how our floor plan is laying out, where we have a double-loaded corridor that makes a sort of truncated U. So the double-loaded corridor functions on, let's see if I can get my mouse up here, the double-loaded corridor is on the Danforth side and partially on the Boulevard, and then we have a single corridor that serves these units in the back. And I'll show you on this plan, it's this one-bedroom unit that I'm circling that will be removed, we've agreed to remove it in discussions with the neighbor, on the fourth and fifth floor. And what that does is it gives the neighbor, I don't have a total dimension, but it's over 25 feet, and it's somewhere between 30 and 35 feet of open space from the third and, from the fourth floor up to give the, you know, optically, her rear yard will feel like it's not being encroached upon. So we thought that that was a nice resolution, and I hope that...
That addresses concerns regarding shadows, right?
That addresses concerns regarding shadows, that's right, she gardens in her backyard. So the third floor stays the same, and it's the fourth floor and fifth floor where this unit would be removed. And again, should this be approved, we'll handle that in compliance review, we can, it's basically cutting that unit off, and then that studio will grow a little bit because we don't need to bring the hallway straight back, fairly simple fix. I did mention there's...
Sorry, Richard, but can you speak to the windows as well?
Yes, so one of the other conditions, thank you Chuck, I was going to do that in the accent, but one of the other things that the neighbor was concerned about was if there were side yard windows that were facing her property. Now, the thing that's clear is we never had side yard windows in the front building mass, so where the mouse is right now, there's no windows. Here, we did have three windows in this one bedroom. Those windows will be relocated to the side, so we'll have one on the bedroom here, one on the living room here, and we'll be perfectly code-compliant, and we'll acknowledge the neighbor's concern, which is a fine concern for privacy, and we can totally handle that, and there will be no windows that face that lot. And we also talked about, for the record, increasing the fence height on the second floor to eight feet, and it will be a wood board-on-board fence, so it will give more visual privacy for her and her children. So the roof plan, no change, except you would see the, you know, that this part get truncated a little bit more, but we are still showing a very, very large roof deck, which is a nice common amenity, 4,200 feet, it is joined by two stairs, so is ADA compatible. And then the elevation, so we did do a little tweak on the elevation, I'm going to just show you very quickly, and all we did was, this was the elevation that was submitted, we think this is tasteful, by the way, these buildings to me started looking too much like rose, and so all we did is, and I'll switch between them, we just moved the materials so that they finger a little bit more, just to kind of break up that kind of singular vertical feeling, and you'll see that in the rendering, it's a very modest change in terms of how we're dealing with the materials. And you can see it here in the before and after, where, for instance, just to show you, here, the darker material, it's carrying over a little bit wider, a little bit deeper than it was in the original, and it's just allowing for a little bit more interplay of these masses, which we think is a little bit more tasteful. It allows for vertical differentiation through materials while still talking about a kind of horizontal continuity of the building, which is important to us. And I think that rendering looks sharp, so I'll show it to you. Same thing on this side, again, I'll show you in the rendering. No change on the side elevations, with the exception of these windows being moved to front and back now, so these windows will no longer be there, they will be on the front and back only, and then the other side elevation, there's no change. We have block elevations just to show scale, obviously, it's a little bit of a larger building on the Boulevard, but this is all zoned to be the same height as this building, and then we show, that would be the similar condition as we transition to Danforth, the only change here is the two lots that were in the R1 on Danforth are being consolidated into this lot. I won't go into the enlarged elevations in details, we have these axon metrics that begin to show the before and after, but you can really see it here where we just are extending these materials a little bit more, and we think the building looks that much sharper, it's a modest change, hopefully the board agrees with us. We did do shadow studies, and this was one of the reasons why we decided to truncate the building in the rear, and ultimately, summer, sun's high in the sky as it is now, there's not a lot of shadow casting in the main part of the day, and that's why you see a lot of white here. The winter, conversely, let me go to the winter, the sun is lower in the sky, you get a lot more shadow, so where we care about, we care about the spring and fall equinoxes, which are the same, and what we're trying to do is, look, all buildings cast shadows, this is a tall building, but fortunately, because the Boulevard actually bends at this area, the site is kind of on a diagonal, so the shadow casting we're getting, we are getting some shadow casting on the neighbor, we've talked about, which will be mitigated by dropping the rear of the building, but because the Boulevard bends, the shadows are getting cast on a diagonal and going into the street primarily, and we think that that's important. We're trying to be a good neighbor, hopefully that sounds good, and I think with that, I can end my presentation, so Caroline can speak, but I'm happy to take any questions you might have.
We'll hold it to the end, Chuck, you got another witness?
Oh yeah, we have Carolyn Rostel, I forgot, it's, I was zoning out.
Chuck, if it's too late for you, you could sit down.
It's the white hair.
I'm still under oath, yes. I know, I know. Okay, I will try to be as quick, but not so quick you can't keep up, I will try. So we're here this evening for this building, and we have a couple of variances. I'm going to start off with the D3 conditional use variance. So as you heard, this is the split-lot zone, and all of the variances I'm going to talk about tonight, these are all relating to R1 standards, okay? The R1 has a conditional, conditionally allows corner commercial, but it has some certain It requires that you, it allows you to increase lot coverage when you have commercial from 85 to 90%. In this case, we're proposing a lot coverage of 91.3%, that is like the 1.3 over what is permitted. This does allow for that larger footprint, it allows for, you know, the diversity of unit sizes, it allows for that larger ground floor space, and a lot of it has to do with the fact that with a larger building, we do also need some of the, you know, additional areas outside of it that have walking paths for fire safety, so that's another aspect of it. We are trying to mitigate this additional coverage with over 3,000, 3,703 square feet of green roof, as well as any other, meeting any other, you know, stormwater requirements under the ordinance. So I think that provides that stormwater benefit for the property with that green roof. We're also providing new street trees on Kennedy and Danforth, and again, those will provide some additional greening and visual improvements to those two streets. The other condition that we're asking for relief from, for the D3 variance, is the other standard is that you have to have a two-foot setback for the commercial space. We are proposing a zero-foot front yard setback, and that conforms with your underlying R1 zone, so we're not asking for a setback for the building from the R1 zone for the base, it's only for this commercial aspect of it, but we're proposing essentially the zero-foot, we think it's appropriate, there's an existing commercial space on this corner, it has zero-foot front yard setbacks, so we're essentially maintaining that existing corner condition, we're just putting in, you know, a new commercial space. The sidewalks here are over 15 feet, or 15 feet, so there's ample space for pedestrians, you're not going to be really feeling that pinch on the street, it is wide enough. And then the commercial storefronts have been designed also to have the doorways inset, so you're not going to get the swing. So again, we're doing everything we can to make sure that you're not feeling the pinch of, you know, the impacts on this sidewalk, so you are going to have, you know, maintain the corner, and you're not going to really feel the impacts on the street. We're asking for that D5 density variance, you've heard me several times this evening talking about what are the standards here, and that's whether or not, again, the site can accommodate the associated impacts of the increased density. This project is going to be 54 units, so I think we're around, I just, I quickly did the math, I think it's 207 units per acre now. This is a really substantially large lot, it's 11,000 square feet, it's approximately five times the size of your typical R1 district, or R1 lot. We are at a corner, the RC3 zone does allow for higher density development, although we're still beyond what that would permit, but we are going to be providing that affordable housing that would be required, it's going to be those eight units even with the loss of the two units, you know, and again, with these larger footprints of these buildings, you get the ability to have those diversity of housing types, you get to have the studios and the ones and the twos and the threes, and that's just sort of what happens when you have a larger footprint, you can have the efficiency of your floor plans, you don't have to have, you know, so many staircases and whatnot, you can be more efficient in your floor layouts, and so you can create these housing types. So again, I think that this is an appropriate density, we are providing onsite parking here, and I think that overall, you know, this density is appropriate for this corner, it's appropriate for the fact that we are along Kennedy Boulevard, which is an RC3 zone, and ask for, it's appropriate to have a higher density mixed-use development, so overall, I think that this site is appropriate. We're also asking for the D6 height variance, again, whether or not this is visually consistent with the environment while not offending the purposes of height restrictions, namely light and air. The RC3 zone envisions five stories here on this corridor, that is what is being provided. The RC3 zone envisions five stories here on this corridor, that is what is being provided. It is going to be consistent with the development that's across the street, which is under construction, it is five stories. So you're gonna start seeing that five-story condition along this corridor, consistent with what is permitted in that zone. So we do think that this is gonna be, provide that consistent visual environment. And as you heard, we are providing stepbacks, we have the side yard setback at, you know, three feet along the whole side yard. We are gonna provide additional stepbacks at that back corner, which again, allows that additional light and air into the rear at that corner. We are in a corner, we are, you know, a lot of our impacts are to the streets on either side of us, to the, I guess, south of us, down Kennedy. Those are other more commercial-focused businesses, they're not really gonna be feeling an impact for light and air. So really, our focus on light and air impacts is to those neighbors, to us on Danforth. And as mentioned, we are going to be making those amendments to, again, to increase additional light and air to address their concerns. I know that we are setting back those upper floors, we do still need that rear yard setback, because we need it from the ground up, and we are still going to be within that setback area on the lower floors. We're a corner lot, we're a little bit of an unusually shaped corner lot. We end up needing an approximately twenty-nine by thirty-foot courtyard at that northwest corner. We are providing a setback at the ground floor. It's gonna be six feet from that, it's like the southwestern lot line, it's adjacent to the commercial, to us, to the south, by fifty feet. So we end up having, overall, in the sort of rear yard, between the two sort of areas where it goes along, we're creating about six hundred and ten square feet of open space in the rear. On the upper floors, we're providing additional setbacks. Those would result in like about a thousand square feet of open space. So again, we are creating the open space, it's just not in the exact configuration. And then, you know, once we get to the fourth and fifth floor, we're gonna be compliant. So we are asking for relief now only on the first, second, and third floors. But I think overall, you know, we beat those consistent side yard setback requirements. We are providing the adequate setbacks from those adjacent buildings for building code purposes. And again, this just allows for those building footprints that create the diversity of housing types. Lot coverage, we are ninety-one point three percent as proposed. Again, we have, it's eighty-five percent in your underlying R1 zone, you get increased to ninety with the commercial. So we are at that one point three percent. So to be safe, I'm asking, we're asking for the lot coverage, even though we sort of covered it as part of our D3 variance. So again, you know, we're mitigating that with the modular green roof system, you know, so we do believe that we're providing, you know, some of that stormwater benefits here at the property to mitigate that additional one point three percent. And then finally, the compact parking space. We're proposing six compact parking spaces. The requirement in the ordinance says, compact spaces where approved by the zoning board shall not be less than sixteen feet long and eight feet wide. There's no restriction on the number, there's just a requirement that they be approved. The spaces themselves are eight by sixteen, they meet that minimum standard, we're proposing six, which is approximately a third of the spaces. So again, I think this is appropriate, allows for the diversity of car types. And it allows for an efficient parking design in the garage. Our last and final variance is for signage. And again, this has to do with the way that the ordinance reads. It basically permits only one commercial sign. When it was sort of set up, it was the thought that you were in smaller spaces, you're only gonna have space for one commercial use. We have a larger lot, we have potential space for three. So we're just asking for the variance so that we can have more than one commercial sign. So it'd be one per tenant, which we think is appropriate. So I think, you know, overall, this project has a lot of benefits, the benefits here outweigh the detriments, and with terms of those C variances. Again, you're revitalizing this corner, and it's more consistent with what the vision is for this corridor long term. It advances the municipal land use law, it's an appropriate use, consistent purpose A. It'll maintain adequate light and air and open space, consistent purpose C, and promote that desirable visual environment, consistent with purpose I. I don't see this resulting as substantial detriment to the general welfare. Again, this is a project that's advancing the intent of the zoning for that corridor, that RC2 district along this corridor, and providing that diversity residential opportunities through the mix of the uses, as well as the affordable units. You know, we're eliminating curb cuts on Danforth and on Kennedy, we're increasing pedestrian safety near the Bud Stop on Kennedy. You're installing new street trees, so again, these are all benefits that are a result of this application. And I don't see substantial impairment to the intent and purpose zone plan or zoning ordinance. You know, again, this is the split lot zone, you know, it's meeting the intent of the RC2 district to promote historic mixed-use districts, and providing residential uses, which is the purpose of the R1 zone. So I think overall, this project advances both the positive and the negative criteria, and that's my direct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and just for the record, I do have our traffic engineer here and our civil engineer here tonight. In the event the board has any questions or wants to hear from them. And then additionally, I usually would address this in my opening statement, but I just wanna point out that what you're seeing tonight is a result of working with the planning staff, and we also had a community meeting that was organized by Councilwoman Ridley. And that's where some of the, you know, the changes in the parking were a result of that. And that completes our presentation.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to hear from that lady.
You, the public.
Yeah.
Do we have any comments from the public?
Yeah, 'cause that lady looks like she really wants to talk.
Been a long night. Very long night.
Welcome to our world.
Damarie Ortiz. D-A-M-A-R-I-E, Ortiz. O-R-T-I-Z. Two-six-one Danforth Avenue. So I'm the only one from my block, never heard anything about a community meeting. I'm directly next door to it, I own the two lots there, lived there my whole last twenty years. First, I wanna say thank you to the architect and the gentleman, they did speak to me, they did, you know, show me some concessions and stuff. But if you look at the final picture that's still showing there, one of the things that I keep asking about is that, so you don't even see my house, I disappear, okay? It completely swallows me, right? So it takes away from what I represent in my community for the last twenty years. Single mom, my own house, last twenty years, everyone else rents, everyone else that lives there, that owns, does not live there. So I respect everyone's opinion, but you don't live there. I live there, right? I'm the one that has to deal with it. I respect everyone's opinion, but unless you're there, you don't know what's happening, what's going on, right? So when I look at this, and I say, okay, my house, let's say the porch starts here, the gate is here. You're starting to build from here, so I'm completely swallowed, right? It takes away the whole twenty-five feet of the front of my house, right? You're telling me you're putting a tree there, that's great, but my pole is there for my electricity, so no tree's going there, right? Then you say, hey, we took away the two in the back, that's great, I appreciate it, you moved the window, so it gives me, so it gives me privacy with my children, 'cause I was concerned for my safety, right? But then, when I still look at it, I'm like, you're still towering over me. So if you look at the pictures and you look at it, it literally is double my house in the height. So I understand that they keep saying the commercial side for the five floors, but this side is only three. So if you're gonna be considering this for some things, but then you wanna consider this for other things, I don't think that's fair or correct, you're using what accommodates you. So you have the density, you reduce by two, you're doing affordable, that is great, I want things to build, I want things to go forward. But there's no parking. You mentioned the house across the street, but the building across the street also has no parking, it's gonna be taking more parking. And you also mentioned, oh, it's comparable to that in height, yes, but you're comparing something that's across the street to a building that's already next to another building that's high. You're in another section that's with single homes that are three floors, not five floors. So I understand all this, I appreciate all the concessions, but I still have those concerns, right?
Thirty seconds.
If you're double my height, you're basically two floors above my roof, where my AC is. So I still keep saying there's gonna be shadow, I understand the engineering, I understand all the things, but it's just, I'm the one that's gonna be impacted, I'm just one person, and that's it.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, can I have comments from the board, the commissioners? Any comments? I'm sorry?
So, I'll go. So I don't know if this is for the traffic engineer or Mr. Gerber, but we don't have the brightest people driving cars nowadays. And I seen people do stupid stuff. The garage entrance, is that the absolute best place to put it? And I know you guys do this all day, but it's just, the, yeah, it's just, I can see somebody doing something stupid, coming off the Boulevard, trying to make a right and then make a quick left and hitting somebody, that's all.
Yeah, so I would just, and Lee is here, he could get qualified, but while that's happening, so, you know, when you have these corner projects, right, which we work on a lot of corners in town, the main goal and the main kind of guidance we get from the municipality is to push that curb cut as far away from the corner as possible, right? And we've done that, with the exception of putting the residential lobby sort of between our curb cut and Ms. Ortiz's lot, right? And so there's a little bit of a buffer. So I actually, so the, so in short, and Carolyn spoke about how this is a little bit of an oddly configured lot, because it's a little bit more of a wedge. We've pushed this, I think, as far away from the corner as we possibly could, without losing parking efficiency, right? And so let me just run through that. If we were to push this all the way to the lot line, we wouldn't be able to take advantage of doing a row of parking along that wall, because that's the way the cars would come in, and we'd have to find, so it doesn't, the best way to do parking, for the, to maximize the amount of parking, is the same way we do housing. Hallway in the middle, units on both sides, same way for parking, drive aisle in the middle, parking on both sides. So this is, I think, the most efficient layout we can get, while still pushing that curb cut as far over as we can. I don't know if you have anything to add to that.
Actually, I wanted to make a comment on that, is that there's a gas station right across the street from this building. And there's gonna be, there is always significantly more traffic coming out of that gas station that's gonna be going in and out of that apartment building. And there isn't any better place than where you have this right now.
Yeah, we, thank you, we agree.
I have a question, how far is this building from this lady's home? Does she have quite some kind of space?
Yeah, and we talked about that a bit, yeah, so, so. So her, two-six-one. So Ms. Ortiz's house is immediately adjacent on the lot line. Now, what the R1 says is if you have a lot line condition, you can build up to that lot line. We have created a buffer, a small buffer, but a buffer nonetheless of three feet. And as stated, there's no windows, we show in our drawings now, no windows over the primary portion of the building. And then that small little leg in the back that we've decreased height of, we've removed the windows from that side as well. So there's a three-foot buffer before our main building, no windows. We've also raised the fence to eight feet from six feet, we've agreed to do that. And then we will relocate the windows.
You increased the fence? From eight feet to six?
Maybe you should show that, that's on the deck above the first floor.
So on the, so this building is a lot, a lot like many of these kinds of buildings, in that we have a larger footprint for the parking area, and then the building gets a little bit smaller above. And where the building shrinks, it's a perfect opportunity to put a deck, right? So this is the parking area I have here, and then this is the first floor. So you're seeing that area that's highlighted in that kind of gray, that L, is the private deck area. And what Ms. Ortiz had said was she was concerned for privacy and for security and things like that, so, which is very valid. So we have a fence proposed, let me just see if I can get this, oh yeah. So here, we were showing a six-foot metal slat fence, and we've agreed to change that to an eight-foot board-on-board fence. The wood is a little nicer, the wood absorbs sound a little bit better, and I think it's actually a little more sturdy the way that those things are built. So it'll be security, it'll be visual, and it'll also do a little bit of sound absorption.
And those are private decks too, it's not a common deck over there.
Yeah, there's not gonna be a lot of people out on that deck.
And this will infringe on her backyard?
There's not infringe, no, there's no infringement at all.
There's no infringement.
We're a minimum of three feet off in the front here. That three feet continues, but then, so this setback is fifteen feet on the second floor and third floor. And then on the fourth and fifth floor, we remove this one-bedroom unit, just lost my mouse, here. So that wall ends here, so this distance grows. So I'm guestimating this, so this is twenty-five here, so this is probably another, to be conservative, let's say, seven or eight. So I think it's over thirty feet for sure, probably like thirty-two, thirty-three feet of space that we're providing on the highest portion of the building, which decreases the amount of shadow casting and so forth. So that part of the building is brought down to a three-story building.
I see, okay.
Yeah.
Any additional questions? Do you have a question? Any additional questions by anyone? Okay. Can we have staff input, please?
Yeah. Staff agrees with the testimony provided by the professionals. From a density standpoint, staff sees this as a good addition to the community, because it helps address the housing needs. As Carolyn Wurstel pointed out, there are affordable units here being proposed, and a range of units, you know, from studio to three-bedroom, that's really good, that's what we wanna see. As far as the height and bulk of the building, you know, Rich Garber mentioned that they're gonna remove some units to kind of create more of a buffer, you know, for like potential shadow casting and so forth. But also, as Carolyn Wurstel mentioned, towards like the south, southwest, there are like two parking lots over there, and it's commercial, there's a commercial building over there. So I really do think, and even to the, actually now thinking about it, even to the east, a lot of those lots have like a significant rear yard setback. So I really do think that they've done the best they could of creating a buffer and reducing the, you know, light and air impact. And to kind of address some of the public comment, I guess to start with the street trees, you know, I do CO inspections all the time. And, you know, if a street tree is not feasible to be planted somewhere, we definitely get that addressed. We have them donate to the Division of Forestry and have that tree planted somewhere else. So if it turns out that that will, you know, get in the way of utilities of some kind, that street tree will be planted elsewhere. You know, as mentioned, the front yard setback, that front yard setback is permitted. And actually, that creates like a sense of enclosure, having that front yard setback there, and having this home, the adjacent Having that front yard setback there and having this, this home, the adjacent property, setback a little bit, I think that does kind of create a sense of enclosure for that. I'm sorry?
I'm sorry. I didn't hear that.
Yeah, I think a lot of the, a lot of the changes will kind of work with or work on behind the scenes for signature sets. But otherwise, staff just requests that the applicant agree to the conditions in the staff memo dated August 5th, 2025.
That would be acceptable.
Otherwise, staff recommends approval.
Okay. So with that said, may I have a motion?
Go ahead, Mr. Jeffrey.
Okay. I'll make a motion for the approval for case Z2024-0078, 1727 to 1733, John F. Kennedy Boulevard.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, welcome.
Commissioner Zabluky?
It's, it's good to see some new development in the southern side of the city. And especially those corner properties. It's always the most important thing to set up neighborhoods and communities. So good to see something there. I vote aye.
Commissioner Burns?
Aye.
Commissioner D'Angelo?
Oh, you turned it off again.
Aye.
Commissioner Shadid? Commissioner Barron?
Aye.
Acting Vice Chair Allen?
Aye.
Acting Chair Rule?
Aye.
Motion carries, seven in favor, none opposed.
No, none.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Have a great night.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Broke a record tonight. We didn't even do this on New York Avenue.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Oh, I forgot.